Okay, great. Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of the Amherst School Committee to order at 6:01 PM. Welcome, everybody. And I will make the note that this meeting is recorded and the goal is to have it live broadcasted by Amherst Media. It may come on a little later, but that's actually a requirement that we say that, so that's why I'm saying that. Okay, so we're going to start by approving the minutes of August 8th, September 11th, and September 12th. And we can do them all together or not, depending on what people want to do. Yes, Mr. Nakajima?
So on August 8th, the listening session was at town hall?
Yeah.
And I guess on the next page, a question I had on the listening session is, I know a guy named Kurt Wise who might have spoken. Is there a guy named Eric Wise who spoke? Or people know? At the end of that long super paragraph, near the bottom?
Mm-hmm. Can check my notes.
My recollection matches yours.
Well, I know Kurt Wise, and I know he spoke that night. I'm just not ruling out the possibility that there's someone named Eric Wise who had this stuff. I didn't take notes on it.
I probably listened to this.
That's okay.
So it's Eric?
It's Kurt.
Kurt.
K-K-U-R-T.
Thank you.
These are like the first corrections I think I've ever made, by the way.
Very good.
I'm going to stop now before I screw something up.
Okay, any corrections on any, if we need a little more time, assuming people, they're pretty long, so I'm assuming people had a chance to look them over before. And thank you, Ms. Ordonyas, again, for taking such detailed notes on that second session at the last minute.
You're very welcome. My apologies for having it so long.
It was great. Actually, very helpful. Oh, yes, Mr. Demling?
I just wanted to quickly thank Ms. Westmoreland for such detailed notes on the first listening session. It was really helpful in preparing for the agenda items tonight. Thank you.
So if there are any further comments, I will take a motion if someone's ready. Yes, Mr. Nakajima?
I'd like to move to approve the minutes of August 8th, 2017, September 11th, 2017, September 12th, 2017, as amended.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Yes, discussion?
Just, it's probably a good idea to split them up because the attendance isn't the same across each meeting. I actually had this problem a couple of meetings ago before I realized it, but we had them in a block, and I had missed one meeting, and so I didn't vote to approve the meeting, I didn't vote to approve the block of minutes because two of the meetings I was at, but one I was not at. And I typically abstain from meetings that I, so I just think it's just better protocol to split them up.
I mean, my understanding is that you can approve the minutes if you're here, even if you weren't there, but we also, that's past practice, but if you feel more comfortable, I'm happy to split them up, too. So let's go ahead and split up just for, because we've had that request. So, Mr. Nakajima, would you be willing to retract your motion?
I move, yeah, I think the second address.
A second? Would the second, are we willing to retract our second?
Yes.
Okay, I retract my second.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. So do we have another motion?
I move to approve the minutes of August 8th, 2017.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Do I have another motion?
I move to approve the minutes of September 11th, 2017.
Second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. And one more motion?
Move to approve the minutes of September 12th, 2017.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, moving on. So announcements and public comment. Do we have any public comment? Okay, thank you to our public for coming. And I have one announcement, which also I will follow up on in school committee planning, which is that earlier in the summer, Ms. Ordonyas and I met with Stanley Molten at the Gazette, and he agreed, was happy to allow us to have space for a column. He was happy to have sort of have it organically occur as we felt that it was appropriate. So it's not on the schedule, it's just when it seems appropriate. So he reached out to us and said that we could have space on the 29th of September, which I felt was a potentially good time, given that we will have just made a decision about the school building committee composition, and we'll be sort of in the process of recruiting people. So kind of a good opportunity to put out there where we are and encourage people to send in their names if they're interested. And I also realized that we have not had a sort of a real discussion about that column and sort of the authorship and open meeting law and how we're going to address that. And I did have a back and forth with our attorney, Mark Terry, earlier about how to navigate that. Interestingly, he had just had the same discussion with his committee, so he had some really interesting, some good suggestions, which are not for right now because it's not an agenda item, but I would like to have that conversation next week. So just going to put that out there. But that's just so you know that that space is out there and the conversation is coming about how we're going to address that. Yeah?
I'm sorry, which, when next week?
So on the 25th, I would like to put it on the agenda to discuss sort of the authorship issues around having a column, and also maybe how we go forward with that as a committee. But that space is open, so I, with the committee's permission, I'd like to go ahead with that. Okay, interim superintendent, oh, any, sorry, any other announcements from committee members? Okay, interim superintendent's update.
Is there an extra one for the public?
There is a back.
They're in the back. I'm sorry, misrespondered. One step ahead of me, as usual. So I'll keep it brief because some of the updates are actually agenda items, that I'd be offering are actually agenda items. So the first, while this is theoretically a regional item, anyone's welcome, and some of our youngest students may actually sort of get excited about seeing high school student athletes and a brand-new gym. So at 2:00 this Saturday, there's a dedication ceremony for the newly renovated gym at the high school. All the members of school committee and school community, this will be in our Friday update this week, are invited to attend. It'll be a relatively short, half-hour, 45-minute celebration. There'll be a lot of student athletes there in uniform to celebrate it, and just a fun event. And so, you know, while, again, it's more of a regional topic, there's 500, it seats 500 people, the more the merrier, and some of our younger students, you know, elementary, because we're talking about the Amherst, to the Amherst School Committee, might really enjoy seeing that and perhaps having an aspirational short experience. And those of you who have been over to the gym, it's pretty amazing the difference, separate from the fact that the flooding and what happened last year. So we'll also be acknowledging some of the staff who worked on that, and particularly the town staff. So I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge Rob Mora, who've given a leave, and our school department stepped up on the facility side and did just an amazing job to round that out, and just emblematic of the partnership we have with the town. The second is, I'm sorry.
All right, just on that, so that's great. I like hearing the acknowledgement of the facility staff. So you had another acknowledgement recently with the water, our plumber?
Yes.
Do we have a program for like an annual acknowledgement of administrative excellence awards or support staff excellence awards?
Yeah. So there's a couple. One is something, actually something Ms. Cunningham, who could be here tonight, is working on, is sort of formalizing an acknowledgement. It doesn't, wouldn't matter the role, it could be a parent, a fellow parent who did that. So I think in the coming months, you'll see us roll that out, that we want to sort of start an acknowledgement system where it can be anonymous nominations and just a way that, you know, like a lot of frankly businesses and non-for-profits have ways where people can anonymously acknowledge excellent customer service. And in our world, customer service means something a little bit different. But we have the Clerical Media Awards, which the school committee is very involved with, the Stars Awards, which you, you know, co-hosted, I believe, last year. And we have the acknowledgement celebration at the end for retirees and years of service. But this is trying to take it to kind of a larger scale. So look out for that. Our website's actually up, but we have to kind of roll out over the next couple of weeks so that people are aware of it. Thank you. Yep. And the second was an Embrace Race event. Speaking of Ms. Cunningham, she was here and introduced that last night. I want to thank the two local members who started Embrace Race, which is a national organization, Prominent Dialogue, and Mr. Demling was able to be at that event last night. And I've talked to four people who were at the event and all of whom felt like it was a really good use of time and really processing some challenging moments to be a parent these days. And processing it with other parents, people reported back being very helpful. Because, you know, we sort of talk about it with a group of friends, and that's kind of the natural impulse, but actually having some more format of understanding our own childhood experiences, how it relates to our parenting experiences, and thinking more deeply about that. And there was interest, I already received emails and a phone call today about kind of continuing that momentum. So we'll be working with Embrace Race to figure out what that looks like. Specific to Amherst, since there was a lot of discussion, agenda items and work by the school committee members, both individually and collectively last year, just, we have new second-grade Super Kids versions. That was a result of a lot of work of community members, staff members, and school committee members around this. So I want to thank everyone because the images are consistent with our values. And ironically, how we picked the program, from the teacher's point of view, was because of the diversity of the characters and how it matched it, and kind of there was a personal relationship that our students had to the characters, as some of you have commented with young children prior. So I just wanted to, I'm trying in these updates to not close loops, but bring closure to topics that were discussed. So we did some training over the summer because there were some other slight variations in the program that wasn't just the character, it was just the kind of the updated version. And the report I got from the schools, I was in two of the elementary schools today, is smooth sailing and teachers feeling much more confident about the materials they're using.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to say, would it be possible to have some of those available in the office so that we could stop by and look, just for, would that be, is that possible?
Yeah.
Having worked on it a little bit, I'm really interested to see what it looks like, but I also think it would be.
There is an answer for copies in the schools that I can get and keep in the office.
Awesome. Just for, you know, enough time for people to check it out if they have the resources. That'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, and maybe we can figure out, I'll work with Mr. Sheehan, maybe the best way is just to bring a set to an Amherst School Committee meeting where you all don't have to come into the schools because you're already here, and it would be, I mean, unless you want it to be a gen item, but that way, I'm just conscious of your time and driving in coordinating so you're all together at school committee meetings. Would that be amenable?
That would be great.
So is that something Mr. Sheehan could?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so last year, when we were talking about the Super Kids issue, there was both the issue of the depictions of the characters, but then there were also the storylines, which were problematic. And I remember the publisher saying that they couldn't make any changes to the storyline necessarily during the timeframe that we were talking about the changes, but that they were looking to that for the following year. So do you have an update on that piece of it?
I do not.
Okay.
And my recollection, which we could certainly talk, is that it was the next edition, not necessarily the next year. Because to restructure involves restructuring not just, I don't mean just the images, that was certainly a significant amount of work, but the scope and sequence of the curriculum. So I didn't think, I think the timeline is a little further out for that one, but it's certainly something Mr. Sheehan and I can follow up on.
Great, thank you.
And the last topic is just a reminder of open house dates. Wildwoods was changed. It was originally October 4th, but then the bid block party got shifted to that date because of the conflict with Rosha Shana. And so therefore, Wildwood, open house is the same date as the block party, which many families attend. So Wildwood changed to September 28th, Fort Rivers the 11th, and Cracker Farm is the 12th of October.
Sorry, can you say, did you say 28th or 27th?
27th, I'm sorry. I may have, I likely said that incorrectly, but the text is.
It is correct.
27th, yeah. It was originally, I'm sorry, let me slow down. It was originally October 4th.
Okay, yeah.
And that was, then became a conflict when the block party changed, so they, Wildwood, knowing that many families, you know, would have a conflict with that, shifted it to September 27th, Amherst.
Got it. No problem.
What time?
I can get those for you.
Ms. Westmoreland will be able to. Maybe she can email those out.
I'll email them.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, thanks.
Okay, great, thank you so much. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have subcommittee reports. And we have Amherst Media on the list, and we can also take any other reports that are out there. Do you want me to cage?
I think Dr. Morris may have more to elaborate, but I think the general sense is, Amherst Media needs more, I think, three weeks to schedule meetings. And it's, I think, dealing with not having enough, you know, you know, staff. And it's around budget, too. I mean, I think that we're dealing with a nonprofit that has a limited budget and limited staff, and so as much advance notice would be great. So that's the gist of what I understand, but Dr. Morris, if you could elaborate?
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's similar to an email that I received that I forwarded to the Amherst School Committee, just Ms. Westmoreland around that, is just asking for three weeks' notice before meetings because the number of public meetings in Amherst is high, and as you said, Ms. Swamini Cage, they're, well, they'd love to have more staff, their capacity to add staff is pretty limited, so they just want to make sure that we're letting them know in full time. And we typically do that. I mean, they have our full schedule, I think, for the year, but sometimes special meeting schedules or adjustments happen, and, you know, we will dutifully respond as quickly as we can and understand that there are some limitations. Would I?
Great, yeah.
So just, I want to thank Amherst Media, if it's okay with you to mention, Ms. Swamini Cage, you know, they've been incredibly accommodating in working on kind of some of the video series that have come out, you know, the first one, Mr. Sheehan, or the second one, I was just saying, Mr. Sheehan was in with DW at the high school. The first one featured Ms. Cunningham and Mr. Harb. And there's another one, which will come out, I believe, this week, which features two elementary school teachers who are highly relevant, the new elementary teachers who are district, Waleska Santiago, who's a new librarian at Cracker Farm, and Allison Estes Brown, who's a new classroom teacher at Wildwood. Coming up soon will be a taping with Mr. Jackson and Dr. Bodie at the middle school and high school, just to share a bit about their, the kickoff of their year and things that are going on at that level. I know that's regional, but they've been incredibly accommodating and gracious in working with us. So I just want to acknowledge their support and thank them for their support.
That's great.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other subcommittee updates? Okay. Okay, so moving on. So the first item on our continuing business is PVCICS expansion. And this has two parts. One is to talk about the town meeting article, and the second part is to talk about the school committee resolution. So at our last meeting, we did vote to submit an article to town meeting. The due date for submission was yesterday, so that was submitted with language that we sort of developed over a couple of meetings. So I have been thinking quite a lot about this process, this, the town meeting aspect or proposal around an article around the expansion. And I have been thinking a lot about sort of our goals as they relate to town meeting and considering, I've been considering some feedback that we've been receiving as well. And I think that sort of where I'm coming down on this right now is that I think that the benefit to this is going to really be, if we can bring an article before town meeting, that we believe pretty strongly that the majority, a sound majority of town meeting can get behind. And I think that that could provide a voice in this conversation, that could be positive, could be helpful in this effort if we approach, approach the board and the commissioner, the acting commissioner. I think that, I think that town meeting is concerned about sort of financial impacts and the finances of the town. That's, you know, essentially what they're tasked with in a major way. I do think that town meeting members are very sensitive to the community and, you know, ensuring that they are supportive of members of the community. And I, I think that, you know, we are entering a sensitive issue here. This is, we are looking at a school that is a community for a large number of people in our, in our district, and, you know, it's where they send their kids every day. And so, you know, there's a lot of heart there, there's a lot of, a lot of caring there. And, and I think that that's, we just, we need to be really sensitive to that as we bring that in front of this larger body of our town. And so with that in mind, I was re-looking at the language that we developed, and I feel that sort of focusing it really around the financial aspects of the, of sort of what we're putting forward and moving away from whatever might be sort of construed as a targeting. I know we did that, but I think we could do it even further in a way that would, could gain support from the body, would be more plausible to gain support. And at the same time, I mean, I think, I think that, you know, we're looking, people are, have been talking about sort of the larger issue of charter funding, which is, of course, a really big deal. I think that that's, that is a long-term goal. I think that what we're looking at now around the PVCICS expansion is a shorter-term goal that needs to be addressed because it is sort of imminently in front of us. And I think that we need, you know, it's very important to mention that in this article and to specifically name that expansion that we are considering, but I think it would possibly be more effective to couch it more within this larger picture of the financial picture. So that's sort of my little spiel of where I am. And I did, I did, and of course, you know, the committee may disagree with me, but I'm putting that out there because that's where I have sort of come down with it. And I did connect with the select board members and the town manager just about, you know, is it possible to change language? And he said that if we are able to get tweaked language in by the 25th, 26th, that would be fine, and that they could, to get it on the warrant, which will then be signed on October 12th. So with that said, I would like to share sort of a version that I came up with along these lines, which, yeah, I can put on the overhead so that people, it was not, not included in the packet, but I'm going to put it on the overhead so that people can see. So, just to pass these out. These copies. These are copies. So what I did was I, this is what I came up with, and then on the back, I put in the parts that I removed so that, so that was sort of clear, you could sort of see them side by side. And we might have, we have a copy in the packet of the, yeah, we do. So we can sort of look at them side by side. So I guess I'd like to open the discussion with that. I'm, you know, of course, open to people responding, pushing back, whatever it is that, you know, but that's, that's what I've come to. So do you think I should read it out loud?
Could be helpful for the public.
Okay, I'll read it out loud for the public. Okay, so this is a revised version. The school committee has not had any sort of input on at this point, so this is my version. To see if the town will adopt the following resolution. Whereas providing free and equal access to the highest quality education possible for every student in our public schools, regardless of income, language proficiency, disability, or any other difference, is a foundational principle core to our democracy. Whereas all schools funded by public tax dollars should be driven by the central mandate. Whereas the charter tuition formula is fundamentally flawed, based on the spending level of a sending, of the sending district, taken directly from the sending district's funding and without consideration for the need level of the students sent. Whereas the charter tuition formula draws resources away from districts such as Amherst Pelham Regional that choose to invest in robust specialized programs like special education and English language learning programs, further exacerbating the budgetary impact on the districts. Whereas the state is supposed to reimburse districts for 100% of charter tuition costs for the first year and 25% for the following five years, but the state has only been reimbursing the first year since 2012. Whereas the present formula and reimbursement for charter schools tuition has a serious impact on district public schools' budget and programming. Whereas in recognition of the inequities created by the systemic problems with charter funding, 78% of Amherst voted against the 2016 Question 2 charter expansion. Whereas the Pioneer Valley Chinese Immersion Charter School, PVCICS, is seeking a charter amendment to increase enrollment by 452 students to a maximum enrollment of 1,036. And in FY '17, Amherst and Amherst Pelham Regional Schools sent 122 students to the PVCICS for a total payment of $2,244,828, the amount of which would rise to $4,937,668, or the maximum 9% of net school spending. If our spending rate, sorry, if our sending rate remains the same and PVCICS meets their requested enrollment maximum. Therefore, be it resolved that the town of Amherst calls upon the acting commissioner of elementary and secondary education to work with the legislature to develop and pass a state funding formula for district public schools and charter schools that adequately funds their respective missions. Be it further resolved that the town of Amherst calls upon acting commissioner of elementary and secondary education Jeff Wolfson and the Massachusetts Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, DESI, to not approve the PVCICS charter amendment to increase enrollment by 452 students to a maximum enrollment of 1,036, and to further deny any similar charter school expansion requests until the funding formula has been corrected. And be it further resolved that upon passage, the Amherst Town Clerk shall nail copies of the resolution and vote, resolution and vote to acting commissioner of elementary and secondary education Jeff Wolfson, DESI, the State Joint Committee on Education, our elected state senator Stan Rosenberg, and our elected state representative.
So having been the member that brought this, this agenda item to our committee, I am somewhat conflicted in this, this kind of change, although it is something I've given increasing thought to in the last several days. So since, since we voted on this last Tuesday, I've had the opportunity to speak to a lot of members of the public about this, and a lot of town meeting members that I want to thank for sharing their views with me. And what I heard was overwhelming support for wanting, overwhelming support for a resolution to not approve the expansion. And yet, concerns over language. And, and those language concerns sort of fell into two camps. One was, I don't understand the demographic numbers and data point that you're making in some of the removed items on the back here. And therefore, even if I wanted to support the resolution, I couldn't in good conscience do it because I don't understand DESI and comparison indexes and ELL versus FN, you know, and all the terminology that we're familiar with at the school committee. And, you know, so my initial reaction to that was, well, that would be the school committee's job to, to educate, you know, and to speak to the town on the floor of town meeting, answer questions. But as I had more of these conversations, it seemed to take, I guesstimate, you know, 15 to 20 minutes, right, to work through that on a one-on-one basis. And so I'm thinking about the pragmatic possibility of doing that on the floor of town meeting. We have hundreds of people, many of which may have their own individual Q and A to feel comfortable voting on this. The other part of the language piece is just how it feels. I mean, this is, resolutions are somewhat emotional thing. It's a declaration, even though it doesn't have direct power, it's expressing a voice. And while there are certainly items in the removed section that I still feel very strongly about, I think, make an excellent point in terms of an argument to DESI, based on what DESI has said, I think in part two, when we talk about a school committee resolution, I'll be able to get into a little further. I can understand how, in a different context, with a different understanding of educational data, that those words resonate differently. And I am sensitive to, to the field of the resolution. And while I don't feel that any of that language is attacking, I can understand the connotation there. So, and ultimately, I come back to, well, why are we doing this in the first place? Why, why are we bringing an article to town meeting? To me, it's, it's because the potential impact to the budget, $2 million plus cut, right, is so great that we have an obligation to raise awareness. And yet, as a town meeting article, it's really a vehicle for the expression of the legislative body, not our expression. Even though we're submitting the article, it's, it's expression of the town meeting's voice. And so, so when I have multiple people saying, I really want to support this resolution, but I can't with this current language, it gives me pause to reconsider that. So I'm sort of back and forth on it, but I would like to hear what other committee members think.
Thank you. Other thoughts?
So this is obviously new. So when I came in, I sort of had my own thoughts that I was, I was, I don't have anything, I don't have other language, I promise. I don't have anything to hit market or pull on me like, I got my own language. But, I mean, rather, I was, I was, so, I mean, it's only last week, right? Talking about this? So it's hard to keep track, isn't it? It's like, my God. So last week, I made the comment that I thought was perfectly appropriate to bring a warrant article to town meeting, given the serious impact it could have on the, on the community and on their budget as a town. And I still agree with that. I mean, I still agree with this sentiment, I haven't changed my mind. But there's also, to me, given the fact that, to me, the end goal, a long-term goal that's laudable is one listed here, changing the funding formulas and sort of figuring out how to solve this awful situation we have in which charters and traditional public schools are at war with one another. That's a great long-term goal. The near-term goal is to make sure that there isn't, in fact, a fiscal catastrophe, which means winning that battle. means winning that battle is more important than proving a point, to me. And so, everything I think about doing fits into the question of, is it going to advance that objective or ain't? So, when I think about first bringing a warrant article, I was thinking about this literally a couple hours ago, that, first off, you better make sure it's going to pass, right? Because if it doesn't pass, or if there's the risk of not passing, then you're sending an entirely different message. So, Bessie sits there, and they say, well, is anyone speaking out on this issue? And you could have, like we did last time, a really aggressive letter-writing campaign, you could have people showing up, you could have resolutions and letters sent from the school committees and superintendent and others, and that has a significant power to it. Whether it'll have any greater power now, I don't know. If you have a town meeting pass a warrant article, I could see in the greater preponderance of the evidence, somebody saying, wow, the real awareness and concern around these impacts is really heightened to a tremendous level. But I'd also argue that, given the fact, and I think actually Mr. Donia was talking about this earlier, that town meeting is a different body, represents, I mean, sort of the gestalt of town meeting is that it represents the whole town, it's all of us, it's our whole community. It's easier to get things passed in town meeting that are about sort of extending services or support for people who don't have it, more than it is anything that seems to divide people a little bit more. And particularly, people have significant needs. And so, my point being on that is, I could easily see members of town meeting going in and saying, well, gosh, I don't feel comfortable about this because, you know, we're here as a collective group to represent the whole town, there are people in our town who go to charters, we hear again and again and again, oh, and by the way, the, you know, founders of the PVCICS really wanted to do this as a part of the Amherst school system, didn't get a chance to, therefore, aren't you now, you know, taking out the brickbats against folks who would have preferred to work with you to begin with? And my point simply being then, is in the sum total of that, if you put forward a warrant and the warrant loses, then all of a sudden, if you're Bessie, you could easily sit there and say, well, those people who are responsible for the budget or administering the budget of the traditional school district are against the expansion, as we always knew they would be. But the town, that includes people who represent a broader population, including the parents of charter school kids, have now decided they don't support that warrant or that resolution or sentiment, and they have more ambivalent feelings. That then actually ironically adds more fuel to the other side of saying that there's a good reason or cause to say there's a constituency within the town that would like to see the expansion of the charter funded. And so, I'm talking again, I'm talking, I realize I'm talking on camera openly to anyone who hears us, so I'm talking about political strategy openly, but that's our only choice, right? That's how we do things.
That's how we do things.
And also, I don't really, it doesn't really matter, because the underlying fact pattern is the same. Meaning, so, it's nothing, one way or the other, changes the actual positive or negative impacts of that expansion. The real question is, what's the most effective vehicle for conveying that message? And so, I came in, for one thing, actually just wanting to say that, because I think as we're, as we're moving forward, my personal view would be, we have to put that in front of the center, which means also, the messages we're hearing from people about concerns over the warrant have to be taken very seriously as sort of canaries in a coal mine, that if you're seeing that opposition now, by the time you hit the floor of town meeting, we know, forgive me, everyone here already extremely knows how well, well, how this works, how a cadre of four or five people becomes 20 people, and then the next thing you know it, there's a middle group within town meeting that comes in not sure what their mind is, and all of a sudden, they're swayed, and then, you know, we all know that it's either one-third or a half, and the next thing you know, you lose, depending on how those arguments go. Which means the arguments have to be as tight as humanly possible, and they also have to be utterly on the side of the angels in terms of the quality of the argument that's being made. So, I would, I'm not, I just saw what was written, so I haven't really given much thought, but the general concept of embracing something we've heard about wanting to change the overall funding formula, essentially, and I'm going to be very crass about this, I noticed that the director of the PVCICS has adopted language of saying, can't we all just get along and fight the state? And I think if we're wise, we'd be, we would actually embrace that concept, but also say, differentiate and say, in the immediate term, we can't afford the head of an expansion either. And then let all the other stuff around whether they're a great school or not a great school, or who they're serving and not serving, be fought out under a different venue than town meeting. That was a really long comment.
Thank you.
Almost as long as your resolution, so I'm sorry.
That's, I really appreciate your comments.
I think I've exhausted everything I have to say, so I'm not going to quiet and listen.
Okay, great. And I have some responses, and I'd like to hear what other people have to say as well. Yes.
So, I just want to say thank you to the chair for taking a stab at this, and I appreciate and agree with pretty much everything that's been said so far, so I won't repeat that. You know, I will say that in some of the conversations that I've had with committee or community members over the past week or so, since we adopted or since we proposed this resolution language for the warrant article, have also been very similar to what has just been described. You know, I think that, for me, the biggest concerns are, A, ensuring that town meeting adequately understands the urgency around this, and that they can understand why we would take a position in opposition to the proposed expansion. And, you know, some of the concerns that I've heard expressed by community members have been that we are singling out a school, and that perhaps that we are singling out that one school unfairly. And my response has been that none of the other charter schools have actually applied for expansions, and especially an expansion of this size, which the board, the Bessie board itself, has said was unwarranted, given the size of the current population and the fact that they have not yet met their cap. So, there's that issue. There's definitely the state funding formula problems that exist. And I think also, you know, from my perspective, I think the community should care deeply that our school committee and that the community in general does not have any oversight over the curriculum of PVCICS and the fact that their student population does not currently match the wider population in our town. So, our public dollars are going to educate amazing students and to care for these families, but we don't have any oversight over that. We don't know how that, the curriculums are actually being created, we don't, you know, as far as I know, just from reading the minutes on the PVCICS website from their board meetings, they have had problems, even having with attendance from their board. And so, even their own board apparently doesn't seem to have any real oversight over what's happening there. And so, and this is not, you know, obviously, this is the difference between a traditional public school and a charter school, is that we have no idea what's actually happening behind the scenes. But that's neither here nor there. The fact is that, at the end of the day, we still have this budget deficit that could be astronomically impactful if it passes, if this expansion passes. And I don't know how we would potentially cover $4 million if this money is taken away. So, there's a lot of unknowns here, which makes me very uncomfortable and concerns me. But again, at the end of the day, I think that, you know, having, ensuring that town meeting understands both the urgency and that they don't lose the message about the importance of, you know, the opposing this expansion, the reason why this is so important is incredibly valuable. I did want to say, you know, again, I appreciate the language changes that were made here. I have two points that I was hoping if, I don't know if this is the right time to do it, or, okay, so...
I mean, it doesn't mean that we're going to adopt this, but we certainly can work on it right now.
Okay.
We're in discussions, so...
So, I think, just in thinking out loud, right, I think that the language for, in the paragraph that begins, whereas the Pioneer Valley Chinese Immersion Charter School is seeking a charter amendment, so that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight paragraphs down. In parentheses, in that, in that phrase or in that paragraph, it says, or the maximum 9% of net school spending. And there has been a lot of confusion, from what I've heard from community members and town meeting members also, who don't really understand what that means, right? And so, you know, we sort of understand that there's a cap of how much actually could be drawn from the budget. And I'm wondering if maybe we need to spell that out a little bit more, because I think that people, you know, in their confusion, if they're reading this, and if they're hearing a counterargument, which is, well, that's, you know, the 4.9 million is too much, and here's the reason why, and it's not necessarily informed by fact, I think we need to clarify that. And then the last comment that I was going to make was just that I really appreciate the second to last paragraph, be it further resolved that the Town of Amherst calls upon Acting Commissioner of Elementary and Secondary Education Jeff Wolfson to not approve the PVCICS charter amendment to increase enrollment to a maximum enrollment of 1,036, and to further deny any similar charter school expansion requests until the funding formula has been corrected. And the reason why I really appreciate that is because from the meeting minutes, reading the meeting minutes from the meeting, the Bessie meeting in February, it appears that one of the commissioners had actually suggested to the director of the PVCICS that they hold off on requesting further expansion until the funding formula had been corrected. And the reason why is understanding the impact that this is, that this broken charter school funding formula is having on schools, on public schools around the state. And so, I think by including this in here, we are sending that strong message that we wanted to send with the original language, and also hopefully giving town meeting something to focus on, which is the fact that we need to fix this, right, that we have an opportunity here as a community to cooperate and to make a statement to the state about getting their act together, frankly, and correcting this problem, because it is negatively impacting our public schools across the board, causing a lot of division in our communities, and candidly, needs to be fixed before any further damage is done.
Thank you. And I just wanted to add that I did, some of this language is sort of drawn from some recommendations that were sent by a town meeting member, so just wanted to put that out there, give credit where credit is due. Just wanted to change, do you have anything to add?
I think that I like the new, you know, proposal for a resolution, and I actually don't have any problems with the passages that were removed, for the record. And I guess the other feedback I would provide would be that we are focusing on the Pioneer Valley Chinese Immersion Charter School because of their active petition to expand. But it may be nice to have some educational materials around what the PVPAs doing, for example, the Pioneer Valley Performing Arts School, what their enrollment looks like, how many students from our district attend that school, and all, you know, just how we broke down the number of students with disabilities compared, you know, there compared to ours, our district, as additional materials in the room at town meeting.
Okay, so, I think, I mean, I just, I think I just want to say it because I feel like Mr. Nakajima, I appreciate what you said, and it was really direct, and I appreciate that, adding that, you adding that to the conversation. And I just, you know, this is some, this is a direction we've moved, we've moved in this direction, we're, you know, on the, on the road. I just want to make sure that, as a committee, we are sure that we're on board, that this is sort of, I mean, given how, I think Mr. Nakajima described sort of how the ethos of town meeting can work. It's not predictable. We can't know how it's going to go, how, you know, what's going to come into the conversation. And I think that there, I mean, I personally have genuine concerns about what the effects would be if this did not pass, even in this form, which I'm not sure that it would necess, I can't be, you know, say with absolute confidence that this would pass as well. So, I just, I just feel that it's important to put that out there, given that, you know, there's a, there's a risk factor. Do we feel that, you know, the value of having this pass on town meeting is worth going through what may lie ahead, may lie ahead, given the risk that we may find that it does not, it does not pass? So, I'm just, you know, if the group feels very strongly in the direction, you know, I just want to put that out there in the conversation, yeah.
So, I'm wondering, even though we all seem to be arriving in an informal understanding amongst ourselves, I wonder if it would be worth taking a motion, not on the final language, but something like to vote on revised language at our September 25th meeting based on Ms. Hazard's, based on the chair's new language? Because there is a lot of interest in this, in the community, I've gotten a lot of feedback on the language, so to be able to say, we've actually made a concrete decision about voting on revised language, and this was the draft, might help. I don't know if other committee members had thoughts on merits of that.
So, you're suggesting that we plan to vote on revised lang, we sort of make a commitment to vote on revised language next week?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Yeah?
And I'm assuming in doing so, the language we'd be, I mean, we'd have to, it's not sound dumb, we'd have to decide what the revised language we were going to be voting on. So, the further point is, we'd be voting on revised language, and we'd be choosing this or something similar to this as the revised language we're voting on, I assume.
Yes.
Yeah, so, like, so similar mechanism in the past where we've looked at a draft like we just have now, we've provided feedback, we don't yet have the final printable form, and yet, next week, either the chair or a member brings back the final form, and then we vote on the final language on the 25th. I guess I just, I just want to be able to say to the community that we've heard your feedback, and not just a generic, oh, we're looking at it, but like, we've decide, we actually had a serious discussion, we decided that we are going to revise our language.
Yes.
I'm not trying to, I don't know if this is a debate or not, I'm trying to engage in a helpful discussion.
Yes, I do.
So, the helpful part of this is, it depends on what we're trying to get out of announcing we're going to take a vote next Monday. If we want actual feedback on, by the way, I mean, I guess I can put it this way, we've gotten some tea leaves that suggest excitement around doing this, we've gotten other tea leaves that suggest that we're going to get some uncomfortableness or opposition potentially in town meeting. If we, if what we're looking for is some level of expression of comfort, that, hey, this looks like it's the right direction, then we, then we need to actually, like, pick a, even if we revised, even if we revised it further before Monday, we would need to at least pick a draft and say, we think the revision looks something like this, so that it then could be available
Right.
to others, and then they could look at it and say, here's what I think. If that's what we're looking for. Otherwise, we announce we're going to revisions.
Yeah.
So, can we just, I mean, I, you know, I can't speak for the other committee members for myself, but this language looks fine to me. I mean, I actually like, you know, I agree with Mr. Wominy Cage, like, I didn't have any problems at all with the language that was removed, but I understand the reasons why we're, you know, we're suggesting these changes, and I think this language is totally fine. I'm okay with voting on this, unless there's some technicality of why we shouldn't. If we feel very strongly that we need additional feedback or input from the community or specific community members around the new proposed language, I guess that's, that's one thing. But I'm also worried about, you know, us sort of working on this indefinitely, right? Like, you know, it's, yeah, so...
Yes.
And on the floor of town meeting, there would be an opportunity to offer amendments.
Yes. Yes, and I think, you know, the goal is to get what's in, what we want to be in front of town meeting members' eyes in their packet, to be as close as possible to what we want it to be. But yes, amendments can be made, of course, yeah.
So, to speak to Mr. Donia's process efficiency proposal, so, so we could, one, just vote on, on the chair's draft changes as the new amendment language, sight unseen. And then, we could also add an agenda item, a sight unseen, that's fine. I mean, what I meant to say is, without additional wordsmithy changes that would take us
Right.
long into our packed agenda.
Or that we could, we could develop, it should be voted on next week.
Right, and then, what we could do, well, I think what Ms. Donia was suggesting is, we could vote on it right now and say, okay, that's the current, that's, if we don't change it, this is the article. And then, we could add as an agenda item for the 25th, town meeting article, and if there are any wordsmithy revisions, like, I can think of two or three wordsmithy things that I think don't have to happen right now, it doesn't change the core content of the meaning of what's here. So, I would be comfortable voting on this, knowing that we had an opportunity a week from now, to, to, one, you know, think about it a little bit in terms of crafting... think about it a little bit in terms of crafting expression. And it also gives a little bit more time for us, right, individually, to speak to town meeting members and say, we heard you, here's, here's the revision, we think it's a lot closer, you know, what do you, what do you think? And then it could be other little tweaks or adjustments, and y'all think about that.
Yes?
To move to substitute the article previously passed for submission to town meeting to the draft presented by the chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Wominy Cage. Any further discussion? I, I just want to, I'm assuming, because nobody's speaking up, that the process described by Mr. Demling is, is, is cool, for, is, you know, is, is appropriate, is something that is reasonable to do?
I think it's fine also, because I forget whether Mr. Wominy Cage or Mr. Donius said we might be able, or you.
No.
Somebody to the left of me made the comment, can't we get a definition of maximum net school spending? It seems to me, if you pick a fiscal year, you know, we can actually say, for example, in FY blah, 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 this would have been blah.
Right.
Blah's blah, right?
Yes, got it.
And so my point is that would allow for that edit to occur next week, for example.
Yeah. Yeah, so that was, that was me, that this person on the left. And I actually like that. I think that that works really well and helps, you know, get at the point, which is, we want people to understand what this means and to have an actual mental picture. And, you know, but I don't have any other suggestions or changes to that, and I agree with Mr. Demling.
Okay, yes.
I just want to add as a final comment, and I said this before, but, you know, I really appreciate the dialogue I've been able to have with town meeting members who have different views on this, and, you know, have, have helped me come to an understanding that a town meeting has its own voice, school committee has its own voice, so the expression of our voices on this topic may come in different forms, as we'll, you know, discuss our own resolution shortly. But, but that is, but crafting something that is, is the most amenable to that voice is, is a, is a advisable thing to do. So I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Okay. Great. So any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Great, it's unanimous. Great. So we're, we're a little behind schedule, but thank you very much for that discussion. I feel like that was important, and I, we're, you know, we're moving along. Okay, so the next part of this discussion is the PVCICS school committee resolution. And I'm going to ask Mr. Demling to start us off with that.
Okay, so this is the first time we've discussed an Amherst school committee resolution. I thought the, the best way to structure this would be to look at the most recent thing that we've passed, which was the original town meeting article, which is actually probably a good place to start, I think, because it includes the, some of the things that were removed in the item we were just discussing. So I have a copy of that, and also, I just took a first pass at a half a dozen things that we might want to change or add, given that this is now the school committee's expression of its position as opposed to something for, for town meeting. So I'll just pass down copies of that. And, yeah.
Oh, yeah, of course.
So, so as, as part of this, I, I've been trying to think of what, what arguments will resonate most effectively with Bessie, because this ultimately is a statement from our board to their board, asking them to vote on a specific thing that's nearly identical to what they voted on in February. And so when I think about the general reasons of, of why oppose the expansion, I think there's, there's at least three major themes, two of which are represented in the, in page one here, in the, in the first version of the town meeting article we submitted, which is the charter formula, which we've discussed at length, the demographic differences, the students served, and the special ed environment for special ed students, and the programming there. And so I wanted to delve a bit into the demographics argument, because I think when you look at the recent history of statements by Bessie, and the data that Bessie provides, it makes it pretty clear how they think about it. And so I think that could really help us craft something that's effective expression for us. So, so this, this first slide here is just, and, and your packet are full versions of a lot of these supporting documents, and I've just culled what I thought were the key quotes from these documents on, on this topic. So, so the first, first document referenced here in Bessie's statements about demographics is, is from their, their board meeting on the 28th, when they opposed the, the same expansion by a vote of seven to two. And these are from their minutes that board members voiced.
Sorry, point of order. I'm not finding what you're referring to over here in our packets. It may not matter, but I just want to make sure that we don't have, there's something that we should be looking at.
Yes. So I think what's in the packet is the full version of these documents up here. And what I've done in this slide is instead of reproducing all those documents and slides, I just took one slide and, and pulled out the relevant ones.
So just to clarify for the audience and for everyone else, so what we're looking at here on the slide is actually taken from the Board of Trustees' meeting minutes of PVCICS dated March 2nd at 5:00. And I guess that, that data is, is what we're, this is drawing from?
So before I go into the first item, why don't I talk about the four documents that are represented, that are quoted from in this first slide? So the first one, Bessie Board Meeting 22817, this is a quote from the Bessie Board Meeting on, on that date. It's from, it's from their meeting minutes. The next one, it says PVCICS Board of Trustees' Meeting 3217, is a quote from, from PVCICS's meeting, from their, their minutes. These are all public documents. The Bessie Letter to PVCICS on 315 is, is the letter that Bessie sent explaining why they rejected the expansion request. And then finally, another letter following up on that request. So there's four different, maybe I failed, but my attempt was to make it simple and clarified, even though in your packet you have the full document.
Thank you. Just want to make sure we're looking at the right thing.
Just to offer one clarification, I think the first document that you were starting to reference, the title at the top is Pioneer Valley Chinese Immersion School, and starts with the language, Chair Sagan asked of issues to.
Yes.
So if people are following either here or at home in the packet, I think that's where you were starting.
Right, right. So, right, so just to reset a bit, what I was looking through these one documents for, what was Bessie's position on demographics, and what have they stated, and what does their data say, such that we could formulate a, an accurate opinion to them? So, so at the decision, they stated, "The board members voiced concerns about whether and how the school is addressing issues relating to diversity of the student population, especially students with disabilities and ELL students." And then there's a quote from PVCICS Board of Trustees' Meeting the next week, that "After a meeting, a phone call from the charter school office to PVCICS indicated that the school's waitlist and special ed programs were issues at the center of the denial. It was suggested that PVCICS build recruiting strategies in their waitlist and then reapply for expansion in two years." And then, in a letter a couple weeks later to PVCICS, Bessie stated, "In particular, the board made the following points during its discussion of the school's request. The school had not yet reached its current max enrollment of 584. The school did not demonstrate sufficient enrollment demand via the waitlist. The school does not enroll a student population comparable to its sending districts. And the school has experienced higher rates of attrition of students with disabilities than other schools within its charter region, based upon the nature of the board's discussion regarding the school's request. The department strongly encourages the school to delay resubmission in order to identify methods to address the specific reasons individual board members decline to support the school's request." So that was March 15th. August 1st, the school reapplied for the same expansion. A couple weeks later, Bessie sent another letter to the school, saying, the letter attached in the, referring to the 315 letter, summarized the decision and strongly encouraged PVCI to delay resubmission of a similar expansion request until the school had identified ways to address the reasons why the board members voted against the request. The recently submitted request, now referring to the 8117 request, was nearly identical to the request submitted on 8116, and did not provide additional affirmative evidence of the school's efforts to fully address the concerns of board members. So I present it like this to, to underline what I, it seems to me, a narrative of a board which has historically been very, has had a positive bias towards charter approval. It was an unusual decision for them to oppose the expansion. So for, for Bessie to clearly call out the demographic problems and to repeatedly request delay, I think, forms a pretty solid basis for our response, where we, where one option for the demographic argument is to, is to simply kind of restate what they have, Bessie themselves have stated. So that's kind of where Bessie stands. In terms of what the data is, so Bessie provides the data online, it's freely accessible to anyone, in their charter analysis and review tool, so their own charter office produces this. And they provide charts that show demographic breakdowns of different subgroups, so ELL, special needs, low income, against a comparison index. And I put this meaty definition up here, just to underscore that Bessie's own charter office goes to great lengths to create a statistically calculated value that is a, basically a weighted value of the, all the schools in, in the charters area, and is, takes into account the prevalence of the grade levels of the charter school and the grade levels in the, in the districts, so that it's a fairer comparison in the eyes of Bessie and the charter office than simply averaging all the schools. And so that definition's available. And then one other point here, and I thought this was important to know, because I've seen some confusion over this, is that when we look at ELL data, so an English language learner is defined by Bessie as a student whose first language is a language other than English, and who is unable to perform ordinary classroom work in English, and therefore, you know, requires additional support services, as, as we're all well aware. So this is distinguished from first language, not English, students who meet the first qualification of not having the first language be English, and yet are able to perform ordinary classroom work. So when we look at the high need group, we're talking about ELL and not FLL. So, that being said, this is the chart for looking at ELL. So the red dotted line there is the Bessie calculating comparison index of all the district schools in their area, and the black line is the, the charter school. And so there's, and this ends at the end of FY17. And this is the chart for the students with disabilities. Might be a little hard to read the numbers there, but that's 13.4 at the end of FY17, the comparison index, and 5.9 for the charter school. And then finally, this is the chart for low income, where you have 39.9 for the comparison index in, at the end of FY17, and 15.5 for low income. So, so these are the charts that Bessie looks at. It's not just because it's on their website. So during the 228 meeting, they pulled up this chart when board members were debating this question, and it was, it was a little clunky, but it did, but even in the clunky demonstration by, by the charter office, it did seem to have an impact. So this is the data they're looking at, and these gaps says, needs no indication or significant. These aren't small differences that could be, can be argued. So, so really, the question comes down to, are these gaps a problem, right? And so that's, that's sort of where the interpretation comes in. The gaps are there, clearly, and the data's from Bessie. So I thought that this was an important thread. It's not the only thread of objection to the expansion, but the demographics are an important thread, so I wanted to be able to share that with the committee.
Yes.
I just wanted to, again, thank you, Mr. Demling, for pulling together all this information, and to, you know, pulling together these different letters from Bessie, and, you know, all the background. I, I have two thoughts. One, I, I'm, I completely agree with everything that you've just stated, and think that the data pretty much speaks for itself. I have, I think, a preference, perhaps even a prejudice, about resolutions. And I actually think that in terms of, you know, since we're not really sure what Bessie's really going to pay attention to, it's, you know, it's, it's not clear, and they've stated repeatedly that they don't, they're not really swayed by letters, you know, emails, whatever, and the anecdotes sort of go both ways, right? But we do know that what was done this past year, in terms of, of opposition to this proposed expansion, seemed to be useful, right, and seemed to stop the, the expansion, or Bessie approval, anyway. But I, I think that in order for us to be able to convey, in the most effective way possible, our intent and all of this information, that the resolution actually works against us for that purpose, I feel that in order for us to be able to craft a, a good narrative, and to be able to say that, and send that to Bessie, but also, most importantly, I think, to share it with the community, that would be the form of a letter. And I think, you know, there's no reason why we would have to do a resolution, right? I think the resolution actually, you know, for, in front of town meeting, makes perfect sense, because we're asking them to adopt sort of this, you know, position. But I think in terms of communicating directly with Bessie, and, and showing, sharing our opposition to this proposed expansion, that a letter works well enough, if not better. So that's just one thought that I have, is, you know, if we could take this perhaps, and maybe add some of these charts, and, you know, with the idea and the understanding that all of these documents are going to become public documents, and that is important, right? We want the community to understand exactly what we are opposed to, and make it very clear that the reasons why we are exposing, we are opposed to this expansion is because there is problems with this, the way that this, this school is being operated. And then, secondly, just to echo, again, Mr. Wominy Cage's comments earlier about providing additional information, not just about the Pioneer Valley Performing Arts School and the other charter schools, but also, I think, this information, having this in the back of town meeting, would speak volumes, because it's, it's information that's actually compiled by Bessie, right? It's information that is, you know, available freely on their website, having the links and all of that. But just to share with town meeting members, because I, I think a lot of people would be very surprised to see how huge of a gap we're talking about here. And again, the fact that this is public school money, that is going to these schools with very little oversight from, from the, the public, and no oversight from school committee and other administrators, is a problem.
Are there comments?
Excuse me. So I appreciate, I really appreciate the materials as well. And some of them, my first opportunity to look at them. And I guess I had a quick question, just for Dr. Morris. When you were writing a letter and talking at the Bessie Board, did you spend most of your time talking about some of the issues around service delivery to, to children with the special needs, and those kinds of issues that are associated with these?
So for my three minutes, I spent, it was focused on the enrollment of students. I tried not to speak to things that weren't in my direct experience.
Sure.
So I did speak a lot about the demographic differences in enrollment, and spoke, I think the general framing was, there's, there's five groups of students that consistently are underrepresented. There's graduation rates, achievement scores, and, and all five of those groups of students, subgroups of students as defined by Bessie, are significantly under-enrolled in PVCICS as compared to our local districts. So let me actually separate, because I'm not being clear. So what Mr. Demling's presenting is the population of students at the PVCICS as compared to sending districts more generally.
Right.
I pulled data that was specific to the two districts that I was representing and speaking for. Palom, at that point, we didn't believe had any charter school students, although that's a different matter altogether. So, so when my, the data I was using, I was comparing students who lived in our towns, who attend our schools versus students who live in our towns who attend PVCICS.
As has been described, I mean, in, looking in the letter.
Right.
Other than the fact that they haven't reached their enrollment cap yet, that does appear to be a, you know, sort of demonstrated demand, efforts to meet that demand, and then the question of the demographic consistency between sending districts and the school, I mean, are very clearly the elements that the, that the Bessie Board fixated on. I'm absolutely I'm absolutely fascinated because, I mean, I spent years trying to become an expert in Buick-Acheese.
Yeah.
And, and the August 10th letter to the PVCICS is actually, I would be really disturbed if I were submitting an application and I got this letter back. I would view it as a, you know, you're making a huge mistake and we're not going to give this to you and you're going to have to really knock our socks off on October 18th in order for us to approve this expansion. And in fact, the presumption is going to be that we're not going to, I mean, I would argue, looking at this letter, that it's saying that the acting commissioner's presumption is they're not going to recommend it for approval unless the materials submitted on October 18th really knocked their socks off. Because they're basically saying, you know, we told you there were a whole bunch of things you need to fix, we need to see evidence of it, you know, you turned around, you know, five months later and just submitted the same darn thing over again. We're really bothered by that. You don't seem to be addressing the concerns that we've raised. You need to let, you need to give us evidence of that. Given, I mean, it's very interesting. Given that, I would, I would, I would argue that it is actually not probably helpful for, for our district to go absolutely crazy over, over this additional request for expansion because what you don't want to do is you don't want to give members of the board an alternative narrative to fixate on. The narrative they should be fixating on is you're not taking our criticisms seriously, you're not remediating them appropriately. And so then the question really becomes, and I'd love to know, is the, is the additional information submitted on October 18th public information, that something will be available to the public, you know?
So the way the original application works is it has to be sent to all sending district superintendents. I would imagine that this additional information would be sent. If not, it certainly should be public information because it's communication that would be open to public, open, you know, public records requests. But my guess is that we should be sent it as superintendent.
So my, my argument would be, just to summarize, I don't want to take up too much of your time. My argument would be, A, I agree with Mrs. Redoni as it should be a letter, not a, not a resolution for the committee. B, I think we should be recapitulating arguments that we made in the spring. I think adding additional data and charts is all fine, but the point is we should really be recapitulating the points that were made that led to their decision for denial of expansion. And then we should actually not vote on or decide any kind of letter until we're able to review the October 18 submission and see whether the things in it that we can point out, that would be, would point out its inadequacy. Actually, I think if we're not speaking, if we can't, we don't speak directly to whatever's in the October 18th additional materials, then our letter is going to be viewed as non-material because we're going to do recapitulating arguments for previously stated applications that have been revised. So we have to address the revised application.
Okay. So hearing what I've heard, I am considering asking Mr. Demling to work with this resolution that, this, this one that we originally voted on, to see if he could rework it into a letter form. Hearing what Mr. Nakajima is saying, I'm thinking about timeline. So we have a meeting on the 25th, we have a meeting on the 17th. So if they are submitting on the, on the 18th, and then can you just remind me of what the schedule is around potential, you know, submitting public comment and that sort of thing? Yeah?
So DESI is overdue in sending us the schedule for, for what the process is going to be. We know that there will be public comment to the commissioner that will end at a certain point, no earlier than November 1st. And then the commissioner renders a decision at some point, after which the DESI board then rules on that decision. Last year, the DESI board ruled on their February 28th meeting. I know, I know the DESI board has a meeting coming up next Tuesday on the 26th, and they have an agenda item for a charter, I can't remember the exact language, but it's about charter amendment requests. So I would assume that if we didn't hear earlier, that at least by that date, we would know what the, the input deadline would be for, for the commissioner's input.
I guess, so I guess the question is, are we on sort of this proposal that Mr. Nakajima is putting forward, that we wait until we've put, said anything out there? Isn't that, isn't that accurate?
Well, I'd say work on the draft that recapitulates the arguments and frames it out, but then don't finalize it until we can review the other thing and then provide additional text that would add oomph to the argument.
Great. So I just would like to kind of make a decision about when we'd like to hear that, that, you know, recomposition prior to when we may have further language added.
So I was just going to share the meeting schedule for AMERST. AMERST is scheduled to meet on the 17th, which it says by the 18th of October, presumably it could be sooner than that. You're not, you're not scheduled to meet again until the 21st of November. But certainly if meeting need to be added, there's plenty of regional meetings and other meetings where perhaps if you need something.
So how about, we could take the information we have today, and if there's any additional input on this before we go on to the next topic from other members, I'd like to hear that so that I can take that, right? And collect this information and going on the structural recommendations that Mr. Nakajima outlined, form it into a letter with the charts, et cetera. We'll at least have something that's, that's pretty close to the mark by the 17th. And the chance that we don't yet have, have had the chance to review the school's response on the 18th, we could sort of table it. And then, once we get the schedule and we know that response is back, if we need to, we could schedule an additional meeting if it had to happen prior to November 21st.
I think that works for me. So I'm, I'm good with moving forward with that proposal, and we will plan to see whatever, you know, you come up with on the 17th. Is there any other comments for Mr. Demling regarding what he, what people would like to see included before we move on? Yeah?
So I, I just wanted to, excuse me if I missed it, but do we have a copy of the August 1st amendment request that they submitted to the board?
Yeah.
I can share what's been shared with me from DESI. I'll make sure that that gets emailed out to you tomorrow.
Great. And then, since these Board of Trustees meetings have a public comment portion, is, is Mr. Demling intending to attend these meetings? Or is there one coming up before in the future?
Yeah.
So my understanding, and Dr. Morris can correct if I'm wrong because you may have more experience with this, I think the September 26th meeting next week is more of a scheduling meeting, like, oh, this is the, they're just setting out the process dates. The, the meeting when the board votes on the commissioner's decision is definitely a big public input event. So I would hope that we would have, yeah, someone representing our committee able, able to speak. It's, it's a little funny how they arrange it. You have to request to speak and then you hear back if you are selected. And last year, there were so many people that requested to speak, they converted into a group. But yes, that, that is something that should be on our, our radar, but probably not until January, February.
Right.
One last thing. When you're, when you're drafting the letter, my, my advice would be to look at Catherine Oppie's letter on behalf of the AMERST School Committee and Dr. Morris's letter. And if there's an opportunity to frame out our letter in a way that directly echoes or refers to things that have been previously stated as issues, I think that would be a good idea to remind them of the fact that we're echoing things, concerns we had, which I think would then frame out introducing any new concerns or continuing concerns they might have with the, whatever we get at the 18th.
Okay. Good.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Demling, for all the work that you have done and will continue to do.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So the next item is what we've all been waiting for. All right. So the Fort River Building Committee forums have happened. We had two, two forums on, in August and September. And so what we have, what we have voted to do is to, on this evening, we're going discussing what came out of those meetings and how we want to go forward with it, with the goal of voting next meeting at the 25th on a school building committee composition, meaning a list of the, the profiles or, or roles that will be filled, not, not individual members. And then on the, after that meeting, after next week's meeting, having that voted on, beginning a recruitment process, and on the 17th, selecting the individual members. So I, as I see the, our tasks before the end of this chunk of this meet, this agenda item, is to, I would like to see us have a pretty good draft of a composition based on what we've heard. And I think, you know, if we get through that and we have time and we're able to sort of start talking about a plan for recruitment and selection, we can do that. If we don't have time, then we'll work on that next week. Okay? So I shared another document with you that I worked on developing, another PB notes.
Special.
Special. So basically, I, you know, I thought a lot about this. I wanted, you know, I reckon, I want to fully value everybody's notes, everybody's takes on what happened in those listening sessions. And I recognize that, you know, this is a process that takes really quite a lot of time to digest, so I wanted to give us something to work with, somewhere to jump off from. So this is in no way intended to be a final, a final document that, you know, sort of reflects everybody's sense of what happened, or everybody's way of organizing what happened. But I'm hoping that it's something that we can, you know, work with, add to, subtract from, and use to help us go forward with this discussion. So I'm just going to go over quickly what, how I, or what I did to create this document. I went through my notes, which were pretty detailed, and I went through the minutes of both sessions and using all of that information. I, I tried to record all the points that I heard. And then I organized them by theme. So I, I felt that on the first page, I wrote clarifications. There were, there were questions that came up that I felt like needed to be clarified. And, you know, that doesn't quite fit into a, you know, place in sort of the decision, but I feel like that those are important clarifications that needed to be made for the community around sort of what the school building committee is, what the ed plan is, what, what all of this is. School committee thoughts. These are what came out of school, what school committee members spoke to, that I think these actually have the potential to be votes. You know, we may, it, just, there are just a few of them. It was brought up that we might want to consider having a clear mission statement of what the school building committee is, developed by the school committee, with possibly a voted document explaining our expectations and intentions. And with the possibility, and then there was the proposed possibility of sunsetting this committee and its membership after 16 to 20, the 16 to 20 month first stage of this feasibility study. With, you know, another, should there be another part of a feasibility study to be performed? That would be a, a new school building committee. So I, I want to put that out there, that that is something that we're going to want to consider, you know, voting on, on, or, or, you know, we could, we could go in that direction of voting on those. And we may not do that at this meeting, but that's sort of a, a direction we may want to go in. Suggestions from the past school building committee, we've gone over those before, but I think those will help inform our discussion. So the next is expectations of school building committee, of the school building committee. There were a lot of comments about what people wanted this school building committee to do, like what, what were their expectations that were going to come out? What do we want to see come out of this? Not necessarily who's going to be in it, but what do we want to see? A lot around public engagement, who they wanted to have engaged, you know? Sorry, let me look at my notes I have here. Oh, sorry, I'm in the wrong place. Like, for example, you know, age, experiences, income level, town meeting members, Fort River, you know, all that sort of thing. Lots of discussion of engagement. And then function, like ways that people, I, I, I had it as functioning of the school building committee, what we want, how we want to see them sort of act and function and perform as a group. So that might be something that actually is not part of our discussion, but is something that we could somehow synthesize and pass on to a school building committee once it's formed. Because I think that that's really valuable information that a school building committee could benefit from. Okay. So then selection process, there were some suggestions about how we'd go around, go about selecting. Size, people had thoughts about size. So there were some real differing opinions, people, there were, you know, personal anecdotes about experiences with larger, smaller committees and how they felt that that, you know, influenced the effectiveness. And then membership. So I broke, I broke the membership comments down according to sort of some designations. One was expertise. Are there certain people, are there people who want to have certain kinds of qualifications? And then educators slash staff slash administrators, who from the school district do we want to have on this committee? Town elected officials, town officials, elected officials, what do people see as their roles and the value of it? And should they be a liaison or should they be a, a voting member? And then community members. And then there were lots of comments about community members and, you know, where they came from and what age they were and what school they were, you know, lots of, lots of comments there. So those are not sort of organized beyond that, but I thought it sort of, it was digestible in these, these chunks. So I think, so the first, I guess what I, one thing I would like to say as we go into this discussion is that I hope that, you know, this document is not decided, you know, other people, I'm sure will have other things that they may want to contribute to this. But as this, you know, sort of document evolves, I, I hope that this really indicates to the public, you know, that we really are, we are really hearing and recording and processing the comments that have been made and what, what people are expressing about what their goals are, what, who they see as, you know, how, how they see the school building committee working to best benefit our community. I think if you look at this list, you'll see that there are suggestions that like blatantly contradict each other. People have, have exact opposite recommendations of what they think would be best or not. Given that, you know, there are, we're going to have to make a decision. We have to make choices and somebody out there is going to disagree with what we decide. I, I just feel very strongly that it's, I would request that people recognize that because they may disagree with our final decision, it does not mean we didn't hear what they said, it doesn't mean we didn't record it, it doesn't mean we didn't just consider it and discuss it. We also, as a committee, that it is, it is in fact, you know, we are tasked with the job of making this decision. We're not just sort of tallying what people said and then making decisions purely on that. We are also using our lens as elected officials who have sort of seen this process from another angle. So that, that is also, you know, that is part of this discussion too, but we really value and have considered what has come to us. So I think the first thing I'd like to do is just to sort of, you know, process this document with people, have other people contribute, or, you know, other thoughts about how we may, how we may go forward with this document. Do people have other things they'd like to suggest? Do they, you know, feel that this is a good place to start? And then from there, once we can sort of figure out what our categories are, I, I'm hoping that this, the way I've broken this up can help steer us towards, towards creating a list of qualifications that we'd like to see. I think based on the kind of feedback that we received, it would be best to put the size question behind that, start with thinking about who is it that we want to have on this committee? And then once we've sort of determined what that looks like, move on to think about what do we think an ideal size would be and how can we sort of work with what we've come up with to fit that, a size that we, we as a committee feel would be effective. So I'd like to sort of, I'd like to first open up the discussion to what other people have, you know, and you, people may actually want to go in a direction that's different based on what they, what came out of those discussions, those listening sessions, but so this is how I'm coming at it, as I try to facilitate this discussion in less than five hours. That's my goal. Yeah, Mr. Demling?
I can start off, I guess. So, yeah, the community input was awesome. Thank you, everybody, for, for sending that in. So I don't have like a fixed, you know, absolute structure of this is what I want the committee to be. I have, you know, a host of opinions on some of these items, and then I'm flexible on others. others. So, maybe, maybe one thing after we finish going down the line, you know, it can serve sort of two purposes, one is just to get a sense of where everybody is, so if we're all saying the same thing about either size, or, or composition, or the mission statement or the scope, or sunsetting, we'll have an idea of that. And then, and then possibly, if there are those first levels of, okay, we're all gonna be in agreement on that, we can maybe take some votes, just to get that, just to hone down the list, because we have a lot of decisions to make on this. So, that being said, I'll just share my initial thoughts, is that in terms of overall driving the work of the committee, I do think having a, as defined as we can get it, specific mission statement is very important, and I don't mean a fluffy vague, please do a good job and adhere to the values of the school, I mean, talking about the specifics of the feasibility study, I think it would be fine to mention that not in scope, this is at least my current view, is that colocation, things like colocation and grade reconfiguration, which were hot button issues, are out of scope of a Fort River building and site feasibility study, because by definition, they affect other buildings. And so, that's not to say that a future school committee or superintendentcy might revisit colocation or grade reconfiguration, that's always a logical possibility, because we're not going to be on the committee forever. But in terms of this particular task, I think that would alleviate a lot of the anxiety that many people feel about where might this committee go. I remember in the first listening session, we had, there was a lot of feedback of the naming of the committee, and we don't want to name it the Fort River Committee, because what if it scopes out? And so, I feel like if we define its scope, but it's not possible for it to go out of that scope, then we sort of address that problem. I do like the sound of a smaller committee, of the eight to twelve-ish range, you know, I'm flexible on that. In terms of, in terms of the specific composition, once I start writing down and taking a first pass at who absolutely must be on the committee, or who I feel is sort of, you know, what roles seem to be most important, it starts to fill up pretty quick. So, the types of roles that seem pretty vital to me would be the Fort River principal, if she has the availability, a Fort River teacher, a Fort River parent or parent representative, a school committee member. I didn't have this thought initially, but I became convinced that a green energy building specialist is pretty important to call out specifically, for two reasons. One is that it really addresses cost efficiency, because there's been, I am no green energy or building specialist, but even in the last few years, the advances in building efficiency and cost of green technology, it continues its surprisingly rapid rate, and so, our ability to build green energy buildings two years from now is gonna be much different than it is now, and so, somebody who is, and plus, it's a strong community value, and we hear it all the time, in terms of concern for climate change, and I feel like if this is ultimately something we're going to ask the town to pay for, to whatever percentage, it's important to inject that value from the beginning. And another role that I thought of, that I think would address a lot of the concerns, is someone who specifically has the task of community engagement, so whether that's entitled community engagement coordinator or specialist. To me, it solves the problem of having to have one representative, representative from every single subgroup, is when I try and go down the list of all the values that I want represented from our town, and try and create a role for each of those values, I get a thirty person committee, right? And so, it's, so instead of going down that road, if you had someone whose, their focused task was on gathering input and communicating output, I think that would be very important, particularly because some of the concerns in the past process were over communication. I think I'll start.
Thank you, and I forgot that I had prepared this. This is just, I printed up the MSBA membership profiles, and then what we did at our last, what the last one was, it's only for reference, just because I thought it might be helpful to look at as we have this discussion. Thank you. Yeah. I probably don't need this. Should I go down the line?
Okay. So, I'm gonna speak a little simply. There are three things I think we need to accomplish. One of them is voting a mission statement that's defined, and just forgive me for saying this, I actually don't want to put in it the things that, I don't know if you're directly meaning, Mr. Devlin's directly meaning this, but I actually don't want to put in the things that aren't, it's not covering, I just want to put in the things that is covering, but that's what it's covering. So, if it's covering a K six building on Fort River, then that means by definition, it's not covering a larger conglomerate school or something. I'm open-minded on the idea that we put in some other clause on that subject, just to make sure it definitively cleared to people, so it can't possibly be misunderstood, but in general, I look for affirmative statements, not negative ones. I support the idea of sunsetting, so I think it gives even greater clarity around the objectives, and also, I think it highlights the idea that, that there are a lot of further decisions to be made, not just by the school committee, but not just by the school building committee, but by the town as a whole, and what the heck happens next, and I think it puts a point of emphasis on there that's very healthy. I also think that between the first listening session and the second, we heard a lot of feedback that would suggest that the composition of the school building committee gets a lot easier to do, once we've defined the mission as being solely focused on feasibility and options essentially assessment of the Fort River site. And so, that relieves us from having to have an all comers committee, as was discussed and debated in the first meeting. I guess I'm not gonna go for the moment through a list of who should be included and who shouldn't. I would also just say that, I think, I don't know who got this correspondence, I'm assuming you, that the chair did, around desire to see zero net buildings adopted among municipal facilities, I know I got one as chair of the regional committee. And I will say two things on that. One, I fully embrace the objective of zero net energy municipal buildings, including school buildings, and I'd like to see that identified as an objective or vision for, or I should say, something to be evaluated. I guess I'll say since it's a feasibility study, I think that should be included within the feasibility study, to the extent that's consistent with the town meeting warrant that was passed. But I'm also gonna say, and so therefore, I do think there should be a member of the committee who has expertise in that area. I'm also just saying out loud, since I'm saying publicly, that I fully support that objective, and since there's no funding for that objective anywhere, this has to be something that can't be viewed as simply a fiat or a pronouncement. If, I looked at the letter that we received as being a statement of some mutual community commitment on the part of stakeholders, to say, we would like to all do this together. If that is something we would, I'm committing I personally support that, if we vote it collectively, then the committee supports it, but that means then, it's, if you know what I'm getting at, I'm not trying to set this as an outcome that didn't, has to naturally happen, it has to be like everything else we're doing, there's a dialogue, there's funding, there's figuring it out, but I wouldn't mind putting that in the mission, I think there should be somebody on the committee that has that expertise.
Can I, may I just clarify that? You're saying that as part of the mission, you would like to see a statement around our value around zero energy buildings?
Yeah.
In that sort of scope and mission statement?
Uh, yeah, 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 I would.
Okay.
And in the language, sorry, to clarify further, no, I didn't think, I didn't take it as that. But I was thinking, but also to clarify, there's an art around the language, because it has to be identified as something we'd like assessed for feasibility, and it's an objective we would like to have.
Yes.
But it's gotta be one of those things that's put in the context of, if all's it is is something everyone would like to do, and no one's, we're not collecting any money to find money to pay for it, then guess what, we probably can't do it, right? We'd like to, but, you know.
Yes, okay, that's great, thank you, thank you. Great, can I continue?
So, I, I actually, I'm in agreement with what's been said so far about just the general guidelines and ideas, I don't disagree with anything that's been said. I would add that I think there was a community member at the last listening session that had said something about must haves versus nice to haves, and using that as a way to help us figure out what the right formula is, and I think, I really like that approach, I think that it helps prioritize for us, for the committee, you know, what we think is really important, you know, and I think when push comes to shove, if we are forced into that mindset, we actually, the decision gets a lot easier. So, anyway, and I don't necessarily want to go through right now either, I don't think I'm quite ready for selecting each and every one of the different, you know, members of the school building committee. I will say, generally speaking, the concept of, I think a couple of people had raised, you know, sort of Fort River only versus having people from, you know, the wider community, and I actually, also thinking back to something that was said during one of the listening sessions about how helpful the outsider perspective is, quote unquote, I actually think for that reason, it's important to have a community member from another school district or school in town on the school building committee. So, I think Fort River presence is very important, but I also think it would be great to have, you know, one person representing sort of another perspective, an outsider perspective. I also just want to say, generally speaking, I don't like the, you know, some of the previous designations that had been used around the previous projects, so for, you know, thinking about like the bold versus sass, or yes to, you know, Amherst schools, I think this is a different project, and I'm not, I don't feel that having that, you know, looking, like actively looking for that particular designation is very helpful. Another sort of big picture for me is the importance of who gets the votes and who doesn't on this school building committee, and I actually think it's important for a school committee to have a vote on the school building committee. You know, I think looking at this previous membership list for the school building committee, there were a lot of town administrators and town officials, and I don't necessarily think that all of these folks, if we were to have more, you know, town officials on this school building committee, that all of them should have votes. I think, you know, it's probably more important to have our educators, to have our, you know, administrators in the school district have votes, as well as the parents and community members, but I do think school committees should be one of the, you know, voters on this, on this building committee. I also agree with the Fort River principal, I would also say having the superintendent or designee also very important on this school building committee, so that's sort of generally where I am right now.
Thanks, Phoebe, for compiling the notes, and, you know, I'm thinking if, you know, this was, you know, if we could have like our own collars, we can designate which ones we liked, and see how many thoughts we got.
Yeah, yeah, right, right, I know, exactly.
But in, with respect to my own thoughts about the composition of the building, school building committee, I think it makes sense to bring in the voices of people who have to live in that building and work in that building, and making sure that the different classroom needs are represented, you know, kindergarten classroom, you know, would look different than a fifth graders, you know, a fifth grade class or sixth grade classroom. I would want to make sure that somebody from special education is represented, somebody from food service is represented, somebody from the front office is represented, even guidance or music art teachers, and bus drivers, because they would have real good, you know, input about, you know, what, you know, what's the ideal, you know, setup, you know, for dropping off and picking up children. I think that I agree that we need to, as our value, strive to have that zero net, being very aware of climate change and what we, as, you know, strive for it, right? I like walking schools that are walkable, so I think that that's important in terms of thinking about layout, and in thinking of where Fort River is, it's near Roland Green Apartments, it's near Colonial Village Apartments, so I would love to see some of those folks have input, and it doesn't necessarily, and so also, the family center ought to be represented, because while they're not, they're dealing more with the middle school age students, I think that they have, they're connected to people who have, you know, come up from Fort River, and also, parents, the, and then PGOs, of course, ought to be represented. So, when I say represented, I mean, I think that there's a way that we can provide people with an opportunity to provide input and guidance, and you don't necessarily have to sit through these meetings at different parts, you know, of the year, to be heard, and if it's the, you know, if it's setting up these, these focus sessions, or these, you know, other listening sessions targeted to certain demographics, I think that would satisfy some of, some of the requests to be, you know, at the table. So, if we can find a meaningful way to allow people to provide input, feedback, and voice, we, I don't think it's necessary to have this gigantic board. I think if we, I think we can do that, and I think our policy, it might satisfy some of our, the policy that we passed around participatory action research.
Great, yeah.
So, just to quickly follow up on John M. Cage's comment about representation, so, and to kind of tie it into what Mr. Nakidou made about, so with the zero net energy, you know, if one mechanism to fold that into the direction of the committee is to make that part of the mission statement, whether or not there's a specific member that is a green energy building specialist, that's another possibility for representation, that if we fold in what Ms. John M. Cage has described of representing these groups in a intentional way with periodic reach out, again, whether that's through a named member that we decide on as community engagement specialist or not, that could be a way to make sure it's at the top of the ledger direction for the operation of the committee.
Okay. So, I guess I'm trying to feel out where people are with this. What I would like to do, I'm sort of ready for us to get down to the nuts and bolts, like I think it's time, I've been at this for a while, I would like us to look at this sort of chunk by chunk, starting under the membership piece, and see if we can begin to identify sort of, and we might not be clear yet exactly what are must haves and what are nice to haves, I think that's a good way to sort of try to, try to organize it in our minds, and sort of go chunk by chunk and see what falls, what falls out in terms of what we really felt was a really strong, a really strong push for, this is something that the community wants, and what we think is important. And I think, Ms. John M. Cage, I really appreciate what you said about, you know, I think that it is, and I think I'm reflecting what you're saying, that it's critical to have a lot of voices represented, but it's not, I don't think it's actually possible for us to either have that size of a committee, or expect all those people to put, you know, the full-time commitment of being on the school building committee, but we do, we are gonna set it as an expectation that the school building committee really makes an effort to reach out to all those voices. Does that sort of reflect what you're saying?
Sure, I mean, I think, or whatever the district, you know, the school, it could be the, I think it's, it's, I think we should always be engaging with different populations.
Yeah, yes.
So, as we get down to brass tacks on the size of the committee and potential names, are we taking it as a consensus statement, that we want to have a mission statement, we're gonna consider sunsetting, and then we're gonna focus on the Fort River site in a K six?
We could, we could, we could also take a vote.
I'm happy either way, I just think, I think those are, those sort of basics, we should know, because otherwise, we're gonna circular, we're gonna theoretically circulate it around, around the committee on those questions.
So, I think I would feel around the sunsetting, I would like to have a vote, I think that would be a good thing. I think around the mission statement, I think that that's something that we should, you know, say, okay, that's something we want to develop, maybe consensus around that, and then vote on a statement.
Right.
Not tonight, but in the coming, but I, because that's the feeling I'm getting. So, given that, can we move?
I'd like to move that... I'd like to move that the committee focus the mission of the Fort River feasibility building committee on analysis and options for a K six elementary school at the Fort River site. And further that the committee will draft a mission statement for subsequent review and approval by the committee. And further that the Fort River feasibility building committee will sunset at the end of, upon delivery and, and presentation of its results. Is that it?
I think that sounds good to me.
You know that? I think that's it.
I think that's it. Anybody else want to?
I think that was, well, I gotta, I gotta finish the motion first. I think that was it.
Okay.
Good looking image, I guess.
No, no, sorry. That's, I was trying to, you seem to try to sneak around the process. I apologize. Okay. So do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Do we have any discussion? Yeah.
If we could just have it read back, so I think this is with the intention of Mr. Nakajima's phrasing. I think it's important to, to make sure that it, that when it's read, that is limited to yada, 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 yada. So you, you, you did a very good job talking about the, the scope of it being Fort River and yet it's not, it may not be grammatically clear that-
We got a substitute, not focused on to limited to in the readback.
I think so. Yes.
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 So are we, are we focusing on the clarifications portion of the notes?
That would be my understanding.
Because, I mean, I think that if, you know, I think around the question of, does the education, is that what we're driving at, that this is solely Fort River building site only? And we're not entertaining reconfiguration?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Is there anything else that we can agree upon under clarifications?
I mean, I, I'm not sure that they would all fit within that, this scope piece. These were just all pieces that I felt, you know, came out and were kind of prevalent questions within the community or, you know. But they may not all fit within this piece that Mr. Nakajima is proposing.
Would we actually get a read back? It looks to definitely have to be read back.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks.
Mr. Nakajima moved that the committee limit the mission of the Fort River feasibility building committee on analysis and options for a K six elementary school at the Fort River site. And further that the committee will draft a mission statement for subsequent review and approval by the committee. And further that the Fort River building committee will sunset upon delivery of its results.
Yes.
So I, I have a, just a question and this is about, this is just something that I've, that has been sitting with me for a while. And it's about the focus on the K through six school. And the reason why I feel the need to raise this is because, you know, $250,000 is a lot of money. It's not nearly as much money as the initial proposal, which I believe was about 750,000. But still a lot of money. And so I guess my concern is that are we painting ourselves into a box by limiting this school building committee to only consider K through six? If it were to happen, so, so what happens basically, let's say two years down the road, this, the school building committee sunsets and we, for various reasons, find ourselves needing to consider reconfiguration or consider a different option for this building and this building site. Do we now have to redo this feasibility study or this, this part of the feasibility study all over again? Because we did not consider this as part of it. I don't know the answer to that, honestly. And so I, I, I just want to ask that question in hoping, you know, that there's, there's some answer to that because I, I am a little worried about that.
Yeah.
So one, my assumption would be a lot of the information on the site and existing, the link additions would be able to be ported into a new design and schematic for a larger school or larger footprint or larger addition. So I, it would, it would, I mean, I don't know, obviously, but I'd be surprised if all of it was lost. But I think bluntly put, if we decide to go forward with the building committee, this is actually why I raised my question a moment ago, if we're not going to limit the scope to a K six and we're going to openly advocate for options as broad as larger buildings and reconfiguration, then the committee looks different, the scope looks different, the whole conversation with the public looks different. I think, I, I agree entirely that it's, it's limiting the scope of activity of this work and that's deliverable and of this committee by saying it's a K six. But I, but I actually think opening up the can of worms of saying the committee is openly authorizing this school building committee to go off in other directions is a profound mistake. And I would rather live with, I would rather live with the limitations of getting a really great deliverable around a K six and recognize that if a future committee and a future superintendent decide that it really wants to do a different building project, that there are going to be needs to get additional funding to do the schematic or feasibility portion for that alternative. Rather than invest all of the community's anxieties, energies and differences of opinion in this building, this one building committee around the, the, the assessment of those range of options. I just think that's a profound mistake.
Dr. Morris.
I think there was a school member looking.
I'll, I'll be very quick. I think to your, the concern about being boxed in and I, I think that this is a hundred percent, this is a town project and it's not the MSBA. We're not subjected to that, to that process. So may perhaps, you know, you know, we, it, we wouldn't be necessarily constricted to the mission statement restricting our focus. So in, in terms of like if we needed to have a different school building in the next 10 years, I think in the MSBA process, you know, you have to stick to the building, to the, like if we voted for a great reconfiguration, we couldn't just say, yes, we'll do that and then do something different. But.
Yes. Oh, oh, sorry. Yeah.
So, I mean, I share a similar concern just because we really don't know what the future holds, right? And so the, the, the variable options explode exponentially as you start to imagine every technical possibility in the future. But I, I'm not that concerned about it. Just based on my understanding, and this may be wrong, but like Mr. Johnnie Cage says, we're sort of making up the rules for ourselves to follow. So there seems to be a bit of leeway here. Is that, you know, technically this is a subcommittee of the school committee. And so if, if it's going along its merry way and all of a sudden something happens that causes the school committee to seriously question altering the mission statement, then the school committee, I would imagine, would have the capacity and the responsibility to pause the, the school building committee and, and revisit that. The, the only other small technical thing I might add is we do have two K to six, one pre K to six in, in our district. And so just so that we don't really tie hands, we might want to say K to six or pre K to six just because it's more or less what we have today.
I want to call in Dr. Morris first.
I'm happy to wait and defer to school committee member.
Other people, oh, sorry. I'm not saying-
So, no. We need that you.
I know.
So I, I mean, you know, just to clarify my, my comments, I mean, I, I hear what the, my colleagues are saying. I, I think my, my concern is primarily that the $250,000 goes to, you know, the, the owner, product manager and the group of professionals who are asked to draw up plans and do the study and everything in, you know, within that scope, right? And so once we get sort of down a path and we have tasked them specifically with looking at a K through six building, that's not necessarily the same thing as a, a two through six school because there's going to be different, you know, restrictions and limitations based on the physical building itself. And so maybe there's some, there can be some variations as, you know, 10 months down the road, once they get started. But my guess is probably not that much without us paying extra for that. And so anyway, I just wanted to clarify that point.
So I think because this is a feasibility study and not a full schematic design, I'm fully in agreement with what Mr. Nakajima said. And the distinction for me is that if at the end of 18 to 20 months, we see plans and there's a decision that the school committee makes, well, actually we want to add a preschool, two preschool rooms or actually we want to make it, I'm not even mentioned any other configuration. I think there's still space and time without adding costs because we're not at a schematic level. We're at that, you know, broader level. So I think given the community feedback we've heard, I think being clear at this level, I don't have concerns about. I don't feel like it's limiting because there's that stop point that you all are suggesting building in after 18 months. And if there is a change in terms of the grade configuration, you know, the real intensive design work and, and that's hence the financial load of the difference between a feasibility study and schematic design, you're still before that place where the deep dive into schematics will go in. So for that reason, I'm not trying to offer you advice. I'm trying to be very, you know, deferential. But I don't have concerns about regretting later on, oh, I wish we'd kind of not been so tightly focused on K to six because I think you've got a long time, you being the committee as a body, have a long time between now and a point at which potentially there's more funding for schematic design. And that's the point at which I think the, adding additional funding would come in. I mean, I think if you're at a schematic design level and saying, well, actually we want to change things radically now, that's where I'd be concerned about adding funding. But for a feasibility study from my experience, which I'm not an architect, but I, I, I think you can feel like if there's a change later, that it can, that adjustment can be made without incurring significant cost.
Okay, thanks. I, I mean, I just have to say that I'm feeling really uncomfortable about now this sort of, you know, the possibility that's maybe being put out there that, you know, the school committee might make a, a mission statement and then change it, you know, in, in, like that is not something that I, I think we've been really clear in these, in these listening sessions that what we're looking at is a K through six Fort River building. And that if we're going to start sort of getting more wishy washy about that, we're going to put ourselves in, in a place of, of a lot of uncertain ground with our community. And I, and personally, that, that makes me pretty uncomfortable. So I, I guess my personal feeling right now, and I, and I really respect the question because I think it's really important. And hearing what Dr. Morris has said now, I guess I feel comfortable moving forward with the, along the lines of the motion that Mr. Nakajima has made. So where are we in this process? So we have a motion?
I support my motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. We had some discussion and so now we're still in discussion if there's any more discussion or if people are feeling that they can move forward with this. Yeah.
I, I think at the very beginning I heard you did have the limited word in there. From, so maybe you just want my read back and then I, I think I would be comfortable about. I think you got it.
I did put the word limited in based on your comment after.
This was, this was a little bit of a bad men near.
So if you want me to go back to the-
Oh, no. Oh, no. Let him go back.
Would we like to have the motion read one more time?
Mr. Nakajima moved that the committee limit the mission of the Fort River feasibility building committee on analysis and options for a K six elementary school at the Fort River site. And further that the committee will draft a mission statement for subsequent review and approval by the committee. And further that the Fort River building committee will sunset upon delivery of its results.
Okay. All those in favor? Oh, sorry. Further discussion?
I'm, I'm just wondering if its results is as specific as it needs to be. So our understanding, I think I've heard everybody say is that it's, it's at the end of that, what I'm now always thinking of as the left column of the, the word flow.
Can I actually offer that? I don't think that was actually what I, exactly what I said at the end. What I actually said will sunset upon troubles, I think I sort of say like delivery of its deliverables, which was stupid. It's like presentation, like, I don't know what I was trying to say. I was trying to say something about deliveries and present, deliverables and presentation of results, something I was trying to say.
Okay.
I, I-
Completion of its deliverables and presentation of its results.
In this motion, does it include that this is restricted to the Fort River building and site only?
Yeah.
Yes. Well, it says Fort River K through six. Is that?
Yeah. And it says K six at the Fort River site.
The Fort River site.
Can we do only just to, or does that, is that redundant?
We have, so we have limited to at the very beginning, right? So I think that-
Yeah, limited to.
Let me read it again. Yeah, it's just the other technicality. I mean, I hate to get hung up on this. It's just that to, to say that, and it should end when it's done doing what it's doing. It's, it's kind of a, I just, I just want to make sure that there's no ambiguity that what's all in our minds right now, which is before we get to that full schematic design, which is not funded, that's when it ends.
Completion of its deliverables and presentation of its results would actually get that done. Because the left hand side that's being paid for by town meeting is only that left hand side. And upon ex-completion of its deliverables, presentation of its results, it's done. It's pretty, that's pretty clear to me. Thanks.
I feel good about it. Now, so is that a amendment to your own?
I think it might be an amendment to my motion.
Okay. So do we have a second for that amendment? Okay. So do we, can, all those in favor of the amend, of the amendment? Okay, great. Now we're back to the original motion as amended. All those in favor? Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. So I, I, as we're going through this, I'm like, I'm feeling like we should have had that statement developed before we did the listening sessions. But, you know, this is the, this is how process works and it's messy.
But it came from listening to people.
But it came from listening. I mean, the reason that we came to this is because we, we heard what people said. So, you know, here we are. Now we have one. Or now we're going to, we're gonna have one. We're gonna have one. Okay. So moving right along, I think that's a good place for us to start. And I'm wondering if people now could move, could feel comfortable moving to a place where we're, we're starting to make a list. Yeah.
I would, but, and I, based on, depending on your approximate estimation of the rest of this item, because we still have three things that I, I don't want to tiredly rush through. I'm wondering if maybe now is a good time for a two or three minute break or?
Oh, I, like a, a break?
Yeah, like getting up and-
Like getting up. Oh, I am fine with that. Would the committee like that? Yeah.
I actually just wanted to ask, because I don't know how much more time you're thinking about for this item. And we have, you know, several other items that we want to get through. If perhaps, you know, we don't necessarily, I mean, I, I guess, I'm a little worried that we're, we're biting off more than we can chew with this agenda item right now. And that we may end up taking, you know, a substantial amount of time doing this, which is, is great to do and is important to do. But we also have these other pieces that are great and important to do. So I guess I'm, I'm looking to the chair and to other committee members to, you know, sort of figure out whether or not this makes sense right now.
Well, I mean, I guess this is a question of whether people feel they're ready to do this. The problem is we have to do it at some point. So are we going to do it now? Are we going to do it next week? And if we do it next week, we're going to need to do it and then also vote on it and talk about how we're going to recruit and possibly talk about how we're going to select. So it, it just puts, you know, it, it's just kicking the can down the road, which we can do. I mean, if people feel like, you know, what I really need to do is go home and study this list and study my notes and study the minutes and come, now that I sort of understand where we are, and then come back together sort of with my own list and then we're going to put together our list and we're going to come up with something brilliant, we can do that. Yeah, I'm willing to go with sort of the sense of the group. Yeah.
So I'm perfectly in favor of taking a two minute break. But I wonder if we couldn't, I mean, I'm not trying to split the difference. But I wonder if there aren't some members of the committee that we can actually enumerate now that we know we want by as a matter of consensus? So that even if we end up having a further discussion next week, we're limiting it to additions from base number that we already clearly, I think I'm going to give my two cents. My assumption is I'm going to want a principal and a teacher or staff member wherever on the committee. And we'll be able to decide that by consensus, I'm guessing.
So what if we put a limited, a cap on the time that we spend on this and whatever we haven't done? We'll finish next time. I mean, that's a more random way to do it, but yeah.
Or have a couple of people just work together to put together a proposed composition and then- and then we can give feedback at the next meeting or something.
We could certainly do that as well.
Or provide, or develop our own list, and then forward it to somebody to...
Oh, yeah.
And then we can choose, and then we can talk about, well, we like twelve, but we need to limit ourselves to eight, do we agree upon that, and how do we select?
Yeah.
I will merge three ideas.
Okay, great.
Take a two-minute break, come back, do fifteen minutes of whatever low-hanging fruit, such as Nakajima just itemized, and table the rest for a couple of members to draft up, and that we will finish off next meeting.
I think that sounds great.
I like that idea.
That's pretty rational.
Okay, so, I'm going to have everybody come back, it's about eight, twelve? Please try to come back by eight, fifteen or sixteen if you can, thank you.
It's more than two minutes.
I know.
Commercial breaks are two minutes and ten seconds.
Hang in there.
Yeah, these are new ones, too.
I felt so bad, Leslie was so excited about them. You see that I pull one from in there, and I can't handle it.
No, no, they're new. I give you a top two. Sure, sure.
So, we're not out of here.
Everybody, yes.
What brings you here?
So, Mrs. Ray's on Massachusetts. Family medical. No, no, just to get it on.
Thank you for sending that along.
Oh, sure.
We are, yeah, 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 we're brutal, oh, yeah, we were involved in campaign contract battle for, yeah. Oh, let me tell you something, I read there, in the Gazette, in the Trust the Gazette, what they've got is nothing compared to what we've got. Oh, yeah, our, our school committee is trying to drive down the wages of our support personnel. They're, they're battling over, like, their local president's league. Okay, I kind of assume that.
We don't have that here.
No, uh, they don't, because, because in Belchertown, you have one, but does she get, like, one free, see, if you're in Belchertown, if you're, if you're a teacher, you get one free duty, you're exempt. So, if you're at the elementary level, you have bus duty, you have to do bus duty. In the high school, you have study hall, our local president doesn't have to do study hall.
So, that gives you some, some hours.
That's it, yeah, yeah, yeah. They're trying to, they're trying to deprive the elementary...
Good to see you, I'm glad to see you.
Of seniority, of just cause, that's why, like, we'll just battle until we, and we're actually beyond mediation now, we're in factifying it.
Wow.
So, we'll have to pay a lot of money to have an arbitrator come up.
Are you on the union, or...
Oh, yeah, I'm the grievance officer.
That's your title?
Oh, yeah, 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 I'm the guy who goes in, argues with them. I'm also on the, I'm on the, I'm not on the teacher negotiating committee, I don't, yeah, you guys can do that. I'm on the, the support personnel negotiating committee.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah, I'd actually rather fight for them than teachers.
So, does that include, like, para educators?
You got it, paras, custodians, food services, everybody actually in the district is an hour and a half.
What do they pay for, like, a library par?
So, a library, or, because you know what step you're at. You'd, a salary would probably be, you're instructional, instructional para professional teacher. This is paid family medical leave for next year.
That's nice.
Oh, yeah.
That's nice.
A very social demographic. And I have another one, the next one. They probably make, I mean, they start at about thirteen or fourteen, and they probably max out at about eighteen, and then intensive needs...
And they want to lower that?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, one of the is, is this is what they're, they want them to pay twenty percent more in health insurance from that compensation. Yeah, yeah, so that's, that's what, they refuse to, to make them whole in that way.
I'm going to make you tell me this in the last meeting.
No, this is the same, I've just got multiple copies going, thanks very much. Yeah, I'll only get the fifteen dollars, and that's that. Yeah, so, that's, and intensive needs, one-on-one, probably start at about fifteen or sixteen, and go up to about twenty.
Who are you?
Like, we're talking about...
Yeah.
Kids who are runners.
Hello.
I really appreciate you guys took a break.
Really?
Hey, actually, I'm going to hear something about a physician soon.
Sure.
A sidewalk along these...
I would be very supportive of that.
And trying to help, like, a five-foot sidewalk, and passing by both sides.
I would be very, very much like, because I'm... Hardly as he's supposed to have a time, actually, it usually goes that way, to inform the campus. So, it's a hate family medical leave, sorry. Yeah, and that's, and that sidewalk, like, goes up like... Now, we've walked up to, like, push, my dog was...
Although, it's so annoying that it goes from this plaza to the...
And of course, because you have to have vegetables along with your dessert, here's my, here's my vegetables.
Okay, so, we're, we're going to go for fifteen minutes, is that what we just said? Yeah, I think so.
Couches.
Thank you.
You know, and then we have the you thing, so that everyone could see each other. That's my process suggestion.
It's like work that we all know how to do, but how do you do it in a scheme?
Yeah, I mean, if we were to be able to get together and, you know, just sit around with the tail and, like, chuse themselves, that would be, but we can't.
Okay, are we all back? Okay, thank you all, we're reconvening our meeting after a break, it is eight eighteen. So, I'm going to say that we're going to go for fifteen minutes on, on trying to get the low-hanging fruit, as was stated earlier, and then we're going to designate two members, one to two members, to develop a...
One to two members?
One to two, we can't do three.
Yes, that's true.
I was going to say, there are options, there could be one or two. So, okay, so, can we, are people comfortable with sort of doing the low-hanging fruit of each category? Does that work?
Let's go for it.
Okay, great, okay, so, let's start with expertise. I am hearing a green design slash net zero energy building expert advocate as a, yeah.
I agree. So, what is the low-hanging fruit?
Oh, oh, that means that things that we can probably all agree on, sorry, I know, that's, I apologize for the expression, I was, but things that we can probably all agree on pretty quickly, and if things come up, and it's like, oh, that was a, that looked like maybe we could agree on it quickly, but actually, there's debate, maybe we can set that one.
We immediately do, we immediately do that, before we start arguing.
Right, we will parking lot it for next time, okay?
Sure.
Okay, so, the, our first, so, do we have, can, maybe I can just sort of look around and get, get kind of the straw poll nods, if we have consensus, and people can raise their hands if they have something they want to add, or say, nope, that needs to be discussed a lot further. So, on the green design slash, and I said net zero energy building expert or advocate as a member.
Yes.
Yep, okay, so, um, okay, I'm also seeing some sort of a community outreach expert, and of course, these can overlap with parents, or other community members, or other profiles, right? I mean, that's, that's a given, but these are things that we want to make sure we have. Some sort of a community outreach expert, or somebody coordinator, yeah.
Yeah, I was just going to say coordinator, just so that doesn't limit it to, you have to have a PhD in studying this field, expertise sort of implies a little.
Do we have consensus on that? Yeah.
So, I, to me, that's a role, that's not necessarily expertise, like, we're not actually looking for a community coordinator position, right? Like, it's, you know, it's somebody who's going to fill that role, so it could be the architect, for example, just picking something out, probably not the architect, but it could be one of the parents, you know, like, it doesn't necessarily have to be, I don't think, a community coordinator, I mean, how do we, you know, how do we find that, so...
Can I say one thing, sorry, can I, I just, I think the reason I think of it as expertise is because when I think of people saying that they want to be on this committee, I'm expecting that somebody might say, and, you know, I have a background in, you know, this is something that I, I think we need to make sure that we have somebody on the committee who has experience in this area. That's, that's my thought, but maybe we disagree, that's okay if we do, yeah.
I wonder if it's communication, like, I don't know who's going to be responsible for communicating, I, I don't know, I don't know what, I guess the...
I think we might be violating our census rule already.
Okay, parking lot, I apologize.
It's okay.
Okay, so, we're going to talk about that next time. Okay, um, does anybody have anything else in sort of the expertise area that they would like to, yeah?
I don't know where this fits, but I liked the concept raised at the first listening session, of getting someone who, I think, I don't know if it's that old soul, or wise old soul, but there's some notion of getting somebody who's been active in town finance, town commit, town meeting, select board, or whatever, somebody who can speak to the public, you know what I mean, the, the idea that you'd have somebody on board who had experience with town finance and perspectives of those areas that they brought to the table, I'm not trying to put that, it's obviously a community member, but it is a particular kind of qualification.
So, you're, you're still talking about a town finance expert that's not a, a school finance?
Well, I really meant serially, they could be a member, a longtime member of the finance, like, former member of the finance committee, a member of the finance committee, select, former member of the select board, or select board, somebody who has experience in the town, and has a non-school perspective to offer on taking a look at elements of the project, you know?
Yep, so, I'm wondering if we should put that in the parking lot?
If you're not finding a way to write it down, I guess it must go in the board.
But I think it's good to have there. Now, it's not actually on the, on the list here, but I, an architect, a community member who is an architect is something that's fallen...
It is on the list, member with architectural background.
Oh, I'm sorry, I wrote it, okay. So, someone with, member with architectural experience from the community.
And that might overlap with the net energy sustainability person.
Absolutely, absolutely. Do we have general consensus on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Yeah.
Just a quick question, so, because we're voting slash revising this next meeting, there's some of these roles that we might choose to merge, right? We're sort of identifying, like, for example, the, the net zero energy and the architect that we just mentioned.
I mean, I think it's, could behoove us to leave it open enough that, you know, maybe we have a community member who is a net zero advocate type of person, but they're not somebody who is an architect, but, or maybe we have an architect who, you know, I don't, I think that we could have a list of roles, and, you know, maybe a membership number, and we're, does that make sense? I, I guess I'm not, I'm not prepared to say we want an architect who has, definitely is a, you know, yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah, I wasn't trying to debate the merit of those two roles, I was just saying, as we're sort of like, doing our agreement shtick here, it's like, okay, this person, this person, okay, yeah, this, we might have these three roles be two, or it's, in the interest of time and speed, we're sort of...
It's kind of a process question, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, right. So, I think I will say yes.
I agree in parking lot.
Can I recommend a low-hanging fruit?
Absolutely.
Fort River principal?
Okay, so, we're moving on to educators?
Well, I, I guess in my mind, I'm just going through the, the people that, yeah, right. We've heard it mentioned enough, then, I think.
Okay, I am also going to suggest a Fort River teacher, and, you know, it has been discussed at different levels, I think...
Wait, are we all in agreement, principal?
Oh, oh, principal, sorry, thank you. Are we all agree with principal?
I have a question about that.
Yeah.
I mean, does, um, does a principal have a greater sense of the entire building? I'm just thinking, if we weren't needing to, you know, because it could be a principal or a designated, but I wonder, could it be, I mean, yeah, I guess, I guess the, the building leader is, is the principal, but I wonder if it can go somewhere else, if it was satisfied.
Would people feel comfortable with Fort River principal or designated?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, me too. Okay, great, thank you.
Does that work?
I think that we have superintendent on there, it's probably going to be or designated as well.
Okay. So, if putting Fort River teacher, or, that does not limit to one, if we want to discuss that.
Can we do educator and staff, so that way we can encompass para professionals?
Yeah, it could be a para as well, for example.
Yep, do we, are, okay, yep. I mean, I, it, it's a little, it's hard for me to not say I, we should have at least one person who is a lead classroom teacher from Fort River, but, um, yeah.
Maybe, maybe both, I mean, I think at this stage, like, if we have to, if we have to winnow it down, we could do that, but I think at this stage, I'm comfortable saying, you know, a teacher and a para, just to make sure we're clear.
Or, or, how about Fort River teacher and other Fort River staff member?
Educator.
Or other Fort River educator?
Dr. Morris.
Yes.
So, I'm sorry, I heard someone say it, and I think if we're going to differentiate, I think, you know, teacher, you know, I'm not offering an opinion on, trying to be cautious of my role, but I think for the second, if you'd said staff member, I think that broadens it sufficiently where it could include, but doesn't necessarily define, I could imagine a clerical person being centrally important, and I believe them to be an educator, but I think, I, I think the broader you can go, if your, if the idea is to not have both be necessarily certified teachers, staff member sort of encompasses things in a way where kind of the broadest group of people who work at Fort River feel like they could access and put in an application or whatever the process did.
Because we're not doing numbers right now.
Yep.
It seems like your earlier comment about having broader categories, so, you could say, a teacher, educator, and staff, and then we're not worrying about what numbers those are at the moment.
Can you tell me what it is you're recommending? Just clarify what it is that you're recommending, write down?
I like the idea of teacher and then staff.
Okay, okay, and I, I just want to follow up, that by saying staff member, we're not indicating that it's not an educator, somebody who's an educator as well.
Correct.
It's just, it's just a broader term.
I generally don't mean it that way.
No. Mr. Wanamaker, are you comfortable with that?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I feel that somebody with special education knowledge, and, you know, we, there's the CPAC parent member, there could be a teacher, I, I feel that somebody with special education knowledge is necessary.
Critical.
Critical.
CPAC designated, then?
CPAC, I don't want to limit it to not being a special education educator, could, could that be a CPAC designated? Yeah, yeah?
I think that's a smart, yeah, because it's, they can, they can also decide, presumably, right, what makes the most sense.
Where's the time, too?
Okay, okay. So, where are we for educator, staff, administration? I think I've heard school committee member.
Yes.
Yes, Dr. Morris.
Can I just humbly offer one thing, maybe not humbly, maybe it's the opposite of humble, is just a critical role that is typically on building committees, that hasn't been mentioned, is facilities director, just there's, just having gone through a project, there is a high level of things that need the interfacing with that, and they also have a, a kind of more knowledgeable viewpoint on lots of logistical issues that, you know, folks like myself who came through more of an educator network don't have, and whether that can be met with town or the community, I'm not sure, but I guess I would just put a plug in to think about that, I think that's, in the past project, it was really critical, and I think, talking to other communities, that person plays a pretty essential role in working with architects and OPMs.
Yes.
I was actually going to bring that up.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's okay, all glory. But, but the question I had of it, though, is that, is there, I mean, should we just say right in that, right now, facilities administrator or something? Because I don't really, I was, one of, my question was going to be, is there already a person in Fort River who'd be the logical designated? Is it whoever is successor for facilities director of the schools? Who?
Could we say facilities director or designated? Would that be appropriate? Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, do we have any, we have about three more minutes, any obvious things in moving into town elected officials, yeah?
So I think we talked about superintendent, um, or designated.
Okay, superintendent or designated.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yep.
Can we, um, see if we agree on a PGO rep, a Fort River PGO rep?
Uh, Fort River PGO rep.
Should we just say parent, right? Parent appointed by the PGO?
Yeah.
So I think the point is, do we want parent PG, parents, Fort River parent on there, appointed by the PGO?
Yeah.
It might need to be parking allotted a little bit, just because, from my, my PGO experience, the PGOs have different ways of operating, and so what might be a parent representative to one school might not be a PGO appointee and boards and, I just, I wouldn't want to, I guess, take this into a corner where it's, okay, there's only, I don't know, two current people on a PGO board, and so it's, if parents feel, I don't. It's probably, I'm probably overthinking it.
Go ahead, uh-huh. So I, I think what I like of the, I mean, I think if we allow the P, Fort River PGO to figure out their process of fairly, you know, um, selecting somebody, then, you know, and I think it's a great vehicle for them to be able to communicate to the rest of the school building community, I mean, to the parent community, what was going on. As, you know, as we, as CPAC as well, I think it's, it's nice to delegate that responsibility to the people that know that community best.
So I think what I'm hearing, although people can convince me otherwise, is that, I, I, cause I, I think this is a really good idea. I, it might be a slightly larger conversation, just to make sure that that's where we wanna land. Um, do people agree, or you wanna just vote?
I'm good with that.
Good with?
Fort River PGO.
Just let, let that stand?
Appointee.
Okay. Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Oh, wow, it's easy.
Alls we have to do is set fifteen minute deadlines.
It's all great, yeah.
How many do we have now?
So.
It's a bad question, probably, you know?
I've got six.
Six?
I do.
I have eleven.
You have ten in the minutes?
Wow, this is so good, okay.
That makes, that makes more sense.
Okay, so I actually think we're just out of time, and actually that's a fine place for us to pause, because I think that once we get into community members and parents, it gets a little bit more, you know, messy. Um, so, and that's actually a great thing for a committee of one or two. A task force of one or two to work on, yeah.
This might be easy.
Yeah?
Like a family center rep. Or does, yeah, from the family center, like with the appointment, family center.
Appointment for the family center? I think it's a really interesting idea. I think it might need a little more discussion. Yeah, okay, so I'm gonna put it in the parking lot, but I think that that's, these are good, to sort of see how, yeah.
One, uh, comment on that, as we're wrapping it up, what we haven't talked about, something we need to talk about, is who is a member of the committee in voting, which I think a lot of these people were describing, or presuming are going to be?
Mm-hmm.
And who are resources that are attached or advising the committee? And, and I, I would, we've gotten feedback that it might be a good idea for some people to be sort of liaisons as opposed to regular members, and I think that's a good, I think that's a good structure, but I recognize that's a parking lot sort of
Yep.
future discussion.
Great, so I think, um, we have sort of touched on that. I think what we're working on now is the voting members, but I think that, because it's specifically around town officials, right? Town officials and elected officials, that's gonna be another.
That's true, but it might be, I mean, to be really blunt, that might be true of the family resource center person.
Right, and I, and I don't think that that, those people who are gonna be advisors is something that we have to vote on, right?
Not sure we do.
I mean, I think that's something that can evolve. It doesn't need to be decided next week. I think there's sort of an infinite number of directions that I can go in.
I think that's true as long as we, we're open, that sounds funny, we have to articulate openly that that's true. So that now somebody doesn't look at the list as a bounded list?
Yes.
And assume that if they don't see a name there that they value, or a quality they value, that means it's excluded.
Yep, okay, so we may need some, find some way to articulate that as part of, even part of the mission statement, actually.
Sure.
Okay, so what I'm looking at now is I think we have sort of two tasks. One is, well, one is to, um, develop a mission statement, that, a draft of a mission statement, and one is to develop a draft of a list of composition to bring to next week, and I think that we should bring both to next week. Do we, do people have any interest in participating in either or both?
I'll do the composition.
Great, okay. Um, and I'm actually happy to do both, but also am fine to not do either, so I'm not, I, I'm not, I'm just gonna, um, see if there's anybody who's sort of jumping at either. Uh, yeah?
Uh, I'm happy to, to work on draft of the mission statement, um, and then we'll be sharing that next week, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, yeah.
Just very quickly, um, can somebody run through very quickly what the, what the list is currently of the, um, the, the profiles of members?
I can read what I have if you'd like, and you can make sure I didn't add something that shouldn't be there. Um, a green design net zero energy advocate, someone with an architectural background, the Fort River principal or designated, a Fort River, excuse me, a Fort River staff member, a Fort River teacher, a CPAC representative, a school committee member, the facilities director or designated, the superintendent or designated, a Fort River PGO appointee.
Okay, whether we say CPAC designated or representative, I think I prefer designated.
Okay.
If that's okay with, okay. Um, okay, so I am happy to work with each of you individually on those tasks, if that would be helpful. So is everybody comfortable with that? Okay, great. Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
So now we're gonna move on to the charter choice private school survey.
So, um, you all saw the regional one, um, but I don't assume that everyone in the audience, either literally here, you know, physically or watching has seen it. So I am gonna re, uh, I'm gonna go over the methodology again, um, so I apologize that you're seeing it for the second time. This is actually the full, because we're gonna post this on our website, it's the full AMERST and regional one, I'll only be talking about the AMERST one tonight, but this is just, I wanted to get the documents, we could post it with all the results. I also think it's worth noting that, um, one, and I don't mean to skip topics, but I think it's relevant, uh, there is a subcommittee or subgroup from the enrollment working group who is actively studying this data and working on, um, further analysis and recommendations, so, uh, well, certainly I'll share kind of my initial analysis and, um, it's, there's a group actively working on this, and they've gathered other data from other data sources, like kind of enrollment trends from other enrollment studies we've done, not about charter choice, just about, you know, birth rate in the town. So I'll share this, but I, I appreciated that you allowed me to share this information with that subgroup before presenting it publicly, so I just wanna also thank you, and, and they felt very appreciative of that as well. So without further, let's see if this will work for me there. Um, so the survey methodology, it was used, using some questions from similar surveys, a significant amount was used from, um, borrowed from the Northampton Public School Survey, which was, um, done by a professional surveying firm and was edited based on feedback from the committee as well as community members. Um, so we gathered addresses from the school attending report, I continue occasionally to receive questions about that. School attending report, uh, is built from private charter and other public schools, um, self-reporting students who attend those schools. Uh, so, uh, charter, our numbers for charter and public choice out students is pretty reliable, because we have, we can confirm that. Uh, for private schools, there's no state reporting mechanism other than them self-reporting, so, uh, it's a, it's a reasonably accurate report, but, um, we did get, receive feedback, for instance, that there was one private school in the area that no one received it, and we know we had students there, we went back and noticed that they'd not reported any students. Uh, so we did, um, a parent at that school was nice enough to forward an email I sent off to that community. So it's not a perfect report, but it's the best we have. Uh, formal letters introducing the survey were sent to all families, um, so they knew it was coming. The survey was then sent to all families in a self-addressed stamped envelope. The text also included a URL and QR code, so that families who wanted to complete it online could do that. And a reminder letter was sent two weeks prior to the close of the survey, so there were three, um, paper letters sent to all families in the list. All completed family surveys received by July first, which was the end date, were included in the analysis. As I said, I received one week and a half ago, but at some point, you know, the analysis had to stop. So I've read all the ones, even if they come in late, but in terms of the analysis, it was done for ones that were completed by July first. So just some framing thoughts is that parents have always had a choice of what to, how to educate their children, and over the years, those choices have increased. Uh, currently, our district is a sec, as of last year, the second lowest percentage of students attending to, uh, not go to their local schools. Belchertown is the only one lower, and Belchertown geographically is a little further from other options, uh, other than out of, uh, public school choice out, but in terms of private schools and charter schools, a little further. Right, so there's more choices than there were. Um, I think as you'll see in the survey results, parents have often different and conflicting expectations for schooling, so what, there isn't a universal, if you do that, then that's what I want for my child, and that's natural, because parents have different parenting styles and different expectations and hopes for their children. You know, I think an important point is that this is a, a survey of parents who have made a certain choice to send, not send their children to our district, and I frame that because it doesn't capture what the parents who are sending their students to our district, um, feel about it and why they make that choice. So perhaps a future set of work might be following up on that and trying to compare those two data sets. So for me, the data helps us understand the decisions of family opting out from our child. Frankly, this has been something that's been asked for, for many years, in town meeting and other community members, and so I feel really good about the data that we were able to receive. You know, as you'll see, there's a significant number of families who filled it out, who attended, had their child in our schools and opted out, and then there's plenty of families who never attended, their children were never students in our district, and so those are made more on perceptions of our schools, and understanding that difference is helpful. Assess the viability, which is gonna look really different from the regional results, or significantly different. Uh, return to our schools in the future, and families open to that. And then what do we, how do we use this data to inform educational programming decisions? I know there's a lot of interest in it. So we had a hundred seventy-four completed responses, um, pre-K to twelve, or K to twelve, I should say. It's a little more than a third of what we sent out, which for a survey where there may be limited, uh, the feedback may be limited in terms of actual applicability to families, was a pretty good rate compared to other communities. Sort of shockingly, more shockingly than any of the survey data, was that ninety percent of the surveys came back in paper form, uh, only ten percent were completed online. As I said, at the regional meeting, um, fifty-five percent from region, forty-three percent from AMERST, and two percent from Pelham, which is roughly equitable to the student populations that we serve in those three districts. So that felt good, and also the private school charter and choice out family split was pretty, pretty consistent with, if you look at it as a whole, how those numbers relate to each other. We feel like it was a reliable source of data. So for charter school survey responses, all ours were from PVCICS, thirty-four of them. Relatively even split among grade levels of students across K to six stu, school, um, the grade bands. The, at the end, there's links to the actual survey data, so anyone who wants to go in and do analysis, uh, it's fully open source. So this is a kind of a summary of the analysis, it's not intended to be, um, everything that could be done with this data. Seventy-six percent had visited a district school before they're making their choice, um, but seventy-one percent had not attended an ARPS school. One of the feedback, um, just on survey design that I wonder about is, um, it's, visited a school, I, I wonder about how often our playgrounds are used, and so, um, if I was designing the survey again, I would ask, attended the inside of an ARPS school not for recreational activity like LSC basketball, or something like that. So I have a lingering question about that, because of the numbers, but I, I won't know the difference right now. It's an even split between the three, um, I should say, our ARPS schools, not attended, but, um, in terms of the enrollment zones. More on choices in the past, uh, ninety percent of these thirty-four responses, uh, said they would have attended, they would have attended our district had they not gotten into that school. Only ten percent said something different, and they said they would have went to a private school. And in terms of returning to our district, for those of you who watched the regional presentation, this is a much more optimistic viewpoint of the, perhaps, um, possibility of returning to our district. You see the very likely is still quite low, but the somewhat likely is much, much higher than it was at the regional level, likely because of the age of the students and the number of years they have left in their schooling experience. So, uh, just reminding you that there was a number of questions, um, we got a lot of feedback on, and, um, the choices were, was it a major factor for why they attended the charter school, somewhat of a factor, a minor factor, or not at all? For those of you who are watching either live or online, it was in the agenda packet, um, all this, this slideshow is as well. So the most, by far the highest response of a major factor was a school offers services, classes, or curriculum that was uniquely suited for my child. I'll dig a little deeper on that with the qualitative comments in a minute. Charter school has more churning, more children learning at a higher level. It'll be really interesting when we look at the private school to see the distinction, uh, between those two, and at least with the AMERST public school data. Less about the local public schools, more about excitement about this particular charter school, so that was a pretty high number, over a third. Rigorous and advanced curriculum for academically diff, students was a third, uh, and then you get into ones that are below twenty percent. So I'm not gonna read through all of those, because everyone has the information, but if you look, there's sort of this first one, which is significant, and there's three more responses which are, you know, pretty significant, and the rest, I don't wanna say they're insignificant statistically, but significantly less than the first four. Ms. Ordoniaz, I still remember this one, suggested that we add the bottom question, concerns about adequacy of special education services. In, uh, all of our surveys, that number ended up really low, which I take to feel really good about, that, uh, families with students with special needs feel like their need, you know, at least on these surveys, um, doesn't seem like they're going to another school to have their needs met. So, um, I take that, I'm glad we added that question, because it, um, gave us some good information, even though the results were very low across the board. Uh, additional themes from the comment, so there was, it was optional comments, it wasn't a required question, but there were twenty-eight comments, um, on this out of thirty-four responses. Twenty-five of those twenty-eight specifically mentioned the importance, should be importance, of dual language immersion aspect of the school. So, uh, given that that was an open-ended question, it was a remarkably high number of responses that cited that as being a, a primary reason for making their choice. So I'm gonna, uh, move on to private school survey data. Thirty-seven responses, um, a little more of a split, right, it wasn't all from one school, thirty-two percent from Hartsbrook, thirty from Common School. Uh, next was fourteen percent from Smith Campus, and the rest were much lower numbers. Again, relatively even split of grade level bands, and the reason I say that is if it was all fifth or sixth graders, that'd be one thing, if it was all first graders, not only because of the age of the students, but the point at which, point at time at which they made their choice. Uh, one of the things, reading the anecdotal comments, uh, or the qualitative comments, was you could see certain points in time in the district's history and comments related to that, but I was happy that there was a pretty even split, so it wasn't like, oh, everyone, you know, who responded was during this X thing happening, was happening at that time, and that wasn't the case. Thirty-eight percent had attended a school, um, before sending their children to that private school. Um, so significantly different answer on choices, you know, if you look at the charter, that was ninety percent would have attended our district. Here, only fifty percent would have attended our district had they not gotten into the charter school of their choice. Uh, also, pretty high likelihood of returning at some point to our schools in the future. Of all the survey data, I don't think there was anything that was quite this high of, of, you know, roughly thirty-five percent saying very likely to return, um, to our district, and then not likely at all, you know, being less than fifteen percent, that also felt very different than any piece of survey data. So it was sort of interesting to me, it was, you know, less of them would have attended our district, uh, on these responses, had they not gone to the private school, but they're also more likely to come, you know, perhaps for middle school, high school, that's an assertion I'm making, or a hypothesis, certainly not, I don't, I can't say that definitively. So why private? These are the results. Um, this continued to be the highest in every survey I think that we did, which is the school offers services, classes, curriculum uniquely suited for my child. Uh, I will say that this is the second most surprising data source on our list, is concerns about emphasis on testing in the district. I'm not critiquing that as being incorrect, it's just compared to most districts, uh, in Massachusetts, we spend, we emphasize test, standardized testing much lower. And so I have a lot of questions, which I'll get to in a second, about what I'd like to do with that, uh, whether that's more of a statement on the perception of public education in two thousand seventeen writ large, or if it's perception of our district for, you know, certain reasons. But I was, uh, my socks were knocked off by that data source, um, and it's also discordant with the charter school families. Um, concerns about budget cuts, much higher for private school families than, than it was for charter school families. Uh, class or school size is up there, more children learning at a higher level. Um, it's kind of less about public schools, more about hearing good things. Uh, rigorous curriculum, you know, and compared to some of the other ones, and perhaps because there was multiple publics, multiple private schools represented in the data, there wasn't as clear cut, I mean, there were themes, but they weren't like top three, and then huge drop off to the others. It's sort of gradually filters down into the, you know, teens and below. Zero percent concerns about MCAS results was another one that I, um, found interesting, but I also perhaps connect to the theme about concerns about emphasis on testing. It's kind of reinforcing that that's not why they're making their decisions. Uh, for the public school choice out survey, there was only four responses. We have very low choice out at the elementary level, um, and it's just too identifiable. The, I mean, the data, it's four, you know, N size is four, it's hard to come to conclusions, and, uh, looking at the comments, um, you know, as a community our size, I didn't feel like I could present that data to the public or release it, um, because I wanna protect the confidentiality of respondents. that data to the public or release it, because I wanna protect the confidentiality respondents. So here's the links, and again, this'll be on our website, probably by the end of day tomorrow, if not Thursday, now that I noticed the typo, too, that I'm pretty embarrassed about and wanna fix, but, you know, so that people can dig into them. I think in terms of next steps, a couple of things come to mind. One was a suggestion that I've heard, and I'd like to follow up on at some point this year, which is doing some focus groups, right? Because you heard me kind of hypothesizing route, and if we can ask families if they're willing to come in, to be asked open-ended questions and have dialogue, I think that'd be a really helpful thing in terms of a next step of digging deeper into the data, instead of just saying, here's our data source, and we're just gonna analyze that piece. I think the other thing, and perhaps when we get to superintendent goals for the year, it'll be a worthwhile discussion, but I'd really like to think about creating a communication plan based on this data, based on focus groups, so that we really approach our district, presenting the good work that our, excellent work that our teachers do, our students do. One of the things that, in the anecdotal comments, I found was wanting to respond to them, right, in their anonymous, so I can't respond to them. Not in a way to be argumentative, but in a way to share kind of my perception, my experience, and what I hear from lots of families and students and staff members. And, and so one of the benefits of this survey was process benefit, that so many people in the comments say, thank you for finally asking, or there was some notion of that. But the other is it raised literacy around, for me, about what people are feeling and, what they perceive about our schools, and what their, again, some of their experiences are. And while I can't respond individually to each one, I think it kind of merits that, looking more holistically about how do we use this data to better our district programs, but also how do we use this data to better our approach towards letting the broader community, not only the school committee, but the broad community, know what's happening. Certainly, the Gazette and the Bulletin are faithful authors of articles about our district, and, and we appreciate that, and as well as the Republican, but we shouldn't stop there. And it sort of was reinforced, particularly reading the commentary in the survey. So I wanna be conscious of time, I know it's quite late, and certainly, you know, I'm open to questions, but I wanna at least succinctly respond to sort of what's in the data set, how am I thinking about it, and what are the next steps that I'm considering?
Great, thank you so much. It's really, it's really exciting to have this data, you know, out there, and I, you know, as a member of the Enrollment Working Group is working on in immersion, possible immersion, sort of examining that as an option, I think, you know, this is so relevant. So I think that, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna be relevant to a lot of, a lot of work going forward. Are there any, any comments, questions for Dr. Morris? Yeah?
So you talked about the possibility of creating a communication plan, and as one of your possible action items. Is, is that something that at least in part could be part of this year's upcoming budget discussions? Because I can imagine some manner of implementation of that, acquiring funding.
Yes. Sorry to be like, you know, I mean, yeah.
So you'd be prepared to speak, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So you'd be prepared to speak to that at the budget planning thing?
It is, and I don't mean to be, I wasn't intending to be flipped by having, giving a yes/no answer. I think budget planning is for the next year, and I'm feeling like I know our budgets, I mean, we've talked openly in public meeting about some of the budget challenges we're facing in the current year, and I still wanna think of a way where some of this can happen within the current year's structure. I don't feel like waiting a year is perhaps in, in our best interest, especially because there's a lot of momentum now, people have been asked relatively recently, and so I'd like to think about what's feasible for this year, as well as thinking about in the future, what would things cost? I mean, without going into great detail, maybe perhaps I'll, I'll hold off until a budget discussion, but I have been kind of canvassing other superintendents in other districts about how to communicate, not just, and you heard me say it before, but not just with their school committee, it's not exclusion of them, but with the broader community about their schools, because it's not, our schools aren't funded only by our school community, they're funded by our entire town, and including parents who send their children to charter school, private school, or other public schools, or don't have children in the schools. And I think a broader approach to communication would truly benefit our district as well as the community. So I don't wanna get more specific, because I feel like, if, if that's okay with the chair.
Sure, yeah.
Just a clarifying question, sort of piggybacking on Mr. Jemling's question about the focus groups that you mentioned previously, which we had discussed at the regional level as well. Do you anticipate that being part of the communications plan, or do you anticipate that being separate?
So I think, the way I was thinking about it, which I'm certainly open to feedback, is, is that'd be an action step that informs a communication plan. You know, I think you could argue, you know, in my head, chicken or the egg. But I think what I'd like to do is get more qualitative data than what's possible on a paper and pencil or electronic survey to inform that, because I have all these follow-up questions, and the sort of, you know, as, when you read the comments, you, I think you'll have the same experience. I'm like, but what about, or how do you think about that, or why did you come to that conclusion, or help me understand where you're coming from, and you can't do that, I, I don't have the capacity to do that in that way, and I think that would actually, from my head, inform a communication aspect going forward, but I could, it could be argued either way, and I, I don't know, I'm open to feedback.
Thank you.
Yeah. I don't know if it was the region or it was related to the AMERST, but you had mentioned the community strategic planning group. Was that, would that be, is that in the AMERST district? Was that in?
That's a regional discussion, and it's been a regional conversation, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, there's two more. So Enrollment Working Group update.
Would you like me to start, I mean, you're a member, too, so I wanna make sure that...
You put this on the agenda.
Yes, absolutely, but I just wanted to, you know. So I thought I'd share a couple of things, and unfortunately, I was unable to attend the last meeting last week, but I think, I think it's worth sharing with the committee at least the five subgroups. I'm not gonna read the description, because we, groups are still working, subgroups are still working on them, but at least to understand what the subgroups are working on, I think broadly, I'd say, and I've said this before, it continues to be a working group that is functioning, in my opinion, at really high level. I off, I'm playing, I'm not in a subgroup. My job is to support all of the subgroups' work, so for instance, I get data requests from subgroups, I've received multiple data requests from those. I, some, some subgroups wanted more membership, so I supported them to find more members. Some, one subgroup had a really neat idea about canvassing data collection at a public event in the last week, and, you know, they just wanted to make sure, just legally and logistically and ethically, it was fine for them to be representing, so I'm playing a support role for the subgroups, just to position my, I want you all to know what my role is. And so there's a declining enrollment group, and they're studying, that's the group that asked for permission to see this kind of data, and they're looking, and declining enrollment isn't just looking at more kids are going out of district, I don't wanna misrepresent them, they're looking at, there's declining enrollment in, in our district, and what are the reasons why, and how can that inform our future planning? The second, which Ms. Hazard, I'll defer to her to speak to, is the language immersion group.
So, so basically, our group is looking at, we, we, one of, one of the subgroups that was identified was, by the larger group, was a magnet, a magnet slash immersion exploration options. And so we, as a group, decided that we were all quite passionate about the idea of exploring the immersion option, also recognizing that, you know, how, how much, what, what was actually feasible. So we are looking at possi-, potential models for immersion, what has been done before in the district, what, what, you know, might work going forward, as well as looking at what kind of opportunities there might be for expanded language opportunities, not just in immersion school, but across the district, because we all agree that while we thought immersion was, you know, would be a great option, it was also a priority for us to consider how all kids could get access to better language, language education.
And I realize a member of our declining enrollment group is here, I didn't notice her before, so thank you for being here, I apologize, I didn't see you to the right of me. The third group we have is a group looking at preschool demand, access, and need. So they're looking at that, you know, it's an issue that's been talked about at the AMERST school committee quite a bit, so they're analyzing that, and that's a group that added some membership, particularly they were interested in adding staff members from the preschool. So that was, I was able to successfully support them in that regard. There's a group looking at socioeconomic balance, and so they're looking at another topic that's been talked about a lot here, the balance between our three schools, what are the current enrollment map. In particular focus, I should say, on transportation and family access to the schools as being part of that as well. So some of it's around socioeconomic balance, and some of it's around the way our map currently goes, how does that advantage or disadvantage students in terms, the families in terms of having access to the schools for all the events that aren't just getting the kid to school 180 days a year. And the last group is looking at special education, and particularly looking at the specialized programs within special education. That's a group that did add a member from CPAC, since that came up in earlier conversation, as the group formed a statement of purpose, it, there was a request from CPAC that was warmly received by members of that group to have representation from a CPAC representative, I guess, or member, to join that group, as well as their student service director, administrator Joanne Smith, who is, oversees a lot of that for the elementary schools, so they added some membership as well. And so those groups are working really hard, we're struggling to find our next meeting date, because Wildwood moved their open house, because the block party moved, and then we moved, and the block party realized, oh, we can't do that. So we are meeting sometime in the next two weeks, and I think we'll try to wrap that up tomorrow to continue the work, and, and, you know, I'm trying to figure out what stop point is, is the right one for the group members to come and present, and that's something I'm gonna ask the, the next, or perhaps the, not the next, but the, the one after that, that, the, because the group, the subgroups work on their own, and then they come together for larger group meetings. At what point did they feel comfortable doing a little more explanation than Ms. Hazard and I did? And whether that's kind of waiting a little further, because they're still in data collection, or they'd like to come and share things with you, and, and we'll give you more feedback, but at least wanted to update it, at at least this core level where we are.
So this is wonderful, I really appreciate you taking the time to explain all the different subgroups, and what the Enrollment Working Group has been working on, and I'm wondering along those lines, if there is an explanation anywhere, you know, perhaps online, about these different groups, and what they're, what they're doing, what they're tasked with, and if there isn't, if we can do that.
Yeah. And so that's something that we have talked about a bit as a large group, I think each of them do have statements of purpose. They were a little wary of, well, let me ask a clarifying question, I may not be answering the question you're asking. You referencing more information of what they're studying, or more what their task is?
More information about what they're studying and their task, so, and it doesn't have to be a long treatise on, you know, it's just a brief, you know, few sentences to explain what they're working on, because I think even that alone would help, you know, people immensely.
Absolutely, and so I wasn't at the last meeting, so I don't know if it came up Ms. Hazard, but it was, when the groups came up with their statement of, statement of purpose, I think there was some feeling like they wanted to dig a little deeper before it was publicly shared, because they weren't, until you start digging, they weren't sure if it was, they were gonna veer a little bit, but that's something we can definitely bring up at our next Enrollment Working Group meeting in the next two weeks, and then share out, because I think it, groups are doing enough work at, for me, in my opinion, which I'm only one member of the group, they're doing enough work at this time where things are sort of solidifying, you know, in terms of what the work is, and what work, you know, is ahead, I don't know how you feel, Ms. Hazard?
Yeah, I think that we're moving in that direction. I mean, I absolutely agree, and I hadn't heard those concerns, but I, I think that makes sense, but that we should be moving in that direction.
Yeah, I mean, just, you know, when I hear statement of purpose, I mean, I admire the, the lofty goal, but I, you know, I feel like, I, I, you know, from my perspective, like just having the information about what they're working on, what they're doing, you know, is, is probably enough, but...
Instead of making the perfect enemy of the good, you could even, I mean, excuse me, I don't think this is online, you could even start with a topical sentence description of each group, I mean, like you just did.
Yeah.
I realize that's not enough information, but I'm saying, since it's more information than we have now, just even putting that up would be great, and then in a couple of weeks, you could put, you could fill in, you know what I mean? Because otherwise, otherwise the argument would be, we'd be like silent to the public until everything's so nicely defined that we can share it with people?
Yeah.
That doesn't sound like a good idea.
So I mean, I, I felt like as a member of a group, that we worked pretty hard in developing our description of what, what we were, and that I, I think we could post it in a way that would be something like, you know, this is what they have drafted, and, you know, these definitions may evolve, but this is where we are right now. I mean, I think, I think we could work this out in a way that we're comfortable.
Yeah, I mean, so my action step, and I agree, my action step is, I can email the group and say, I mean, I think the statement of purpose are in pretty good shape, frankly, and I think they sort of solve, I mean, they're not like pages and pages long, they're paragraphs. And, yeah, and, and so I will, my action step is I'll email the larger group saying, has anything changed since we looked at this a month ago, and are you, is the group comfortable with me posting these, both at school committee and posting online? And then I'll get back to you.
That'd be great.
Does that sound okay?
So my question's really about timeline, so as I sort of imagine where this is all going, I, I, I'm guessing that at some point it stops, even though all these topics could be explored, a long time, truthfully. The subgroups would report out, to the school committee, I would imagine, and then I, I would think we would want to have you then follow, maybe not immediately, maybe at the next meeting, about what your digestion was, your recommendations. The school committee discusses, we, we act, we, leads to action items. I'm wondering how much calendar work you've done, just looking at the months and saying, okay, if we want, if we know we wanna act on this stuff by, I don't know, March of 2018, or whatever you think is, is, is the urgent need, then to pen that in, and then to, to walk the schedule backwards, or, or do you think, like, things are progressing to the point where this is all gonna happen in a, in a fairly timely manner?
Yeah. So the facilitators is Dr. Kristen Rodriguez has worked with us about, you know, really the group's wrapping up in early, late November, early December, to be able to share with, their reports with you. And at that point, I think that my, my hypothesis would be the school committee needs, well, as you said, to digest the information, as will I, and then I'll have more access, because I meet with the larger group. But the next step, the action item, I think, would be saying, you know, presumably not necessarily with five, but spending some resources and, and time and capital and energy, looking at, you know, they're, they're not all mutually exclusive, right, these different options, and saying, we wanna get much more in-depth on these two or three, and then I'd be working with you on how we would do that. These groups are sort of, speaking of sunsetting, right, there's no expectation beyond December, but they're supposed to get, their task is to get you a reasonable idea of what are some of the ongoing issues that they're seeing, what are some potential ways to approach this, they're not going to, you know, my, my poor analogy for the building project, to the, a building project, would be, these are not gonna be construction documents, right? These are not gonna be actionable, like, we can do X tomorrow, but they are gonna give more of a sense than we currently have on each of these items, and I think that's gonna be the dialogue, is what's the deep dive we wanna go into as a district, in much more intentional detail, much more publicly, you know, to that point, as we explore this, I don't think March, you know, I don't know if you had said that intentionally, or more just...
Just throwing out there.
Yeah, I, I don't think that's a reasonable, you know, I think from presenting, them presenting in December, getting to it, I wouldn't imagine March as being a reasonable, I think it'd be too soon. But I do think sometime later in the spring would be a reasonable goal to have, where you'd get a, a much more detailed report than what we're gonna receive, and it's not to critique the Enrollment Working Group, but, you know, we really need to bring in expertise that's not just local on any of these topics, site visits, right, I mean, all those kind of things. But as I see it, I'd see kind of from the group started, which was July, to December, that's the work of this, these five subgroups of the larger group, if you wanna frame it that way. I think there'd be a month or two of discussion, myself, school committee, say, okay, you know, where's the deep dive gonna go, where we're gonna put a lot of resources? And then that work happened through the winter and spring months, to come back with you, you know, really concrete, you know, again, using my analogy, construction documents for your consideration later in the spring. That's the timeline as I perceive it, you know, I don't know if Ms. Hazard has other thoughts on that one as well.
I mean, that's my understanding.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think that's the deliberate process that we'll need to have, because certainly when, when these subgroups finish their work and present their findings, that's gonna engage the public at a pretty high level, I think, I think there'll be a lot of interest in what they have to say, and I think a, kind of another round of community members are gonna get involved in that next, next level of work. But I think being deliberate and having kind of mod, frankly, trying to model a process where we have a lot of community, I mean, really, this is a community, there's more parents, guardians, or community members on this than there is any other group, and a lot of them have expertise in different areas, as, as the group found out last time when they looked about data, and, and how to access qualitative and quantitative data, and how to use peer-reviewed research, and so there's a lot of capacity on that group, but having kind of a public presentation of, here's where we are, here are some things that we might wanna explore, and not at a, like, 30,000-foot level, but not on the ground either, somewhere in between, and then having a public discussion and discourse about which ones do we wanna take on, and how would that process work? Having a very public process, looking, going into that deep dive and coming back, I think that's the process both we benefit from and the community benefits from, because we're walking through every step of the way. Sorry, that was a long-winded answer.
No, it's exactly...
Thank you. Thank you very much. So I'm just mindful of time, it's now 9:12, which is 12 minutes after our... It's now nine 12, which is 12 minutes after our designated end time. We have one more sort of strong agenda item on there, which is homework working group update, which is pretty interesting. I'm wondering if the committee feels comfortable going forward with that. It's, it's put on the account, on the agenda for 15 minutes. So I'm trying to have a hard start, stop. If we can agree to having a hard stop at 9:30, are people comfortable with that? Or would you prefer to take a different path? Yeah?
Does the 9:30 hard stop include the last two or the last agenda item?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you feel like we can work with that?
Whatever. Yeah, I mean, we will, Mr. Sheen and I will adjust that accordingly.
I mean, I think if we take 15 minutes, school committee planning, I'm going to think we can do it in about five, unless that's.
I just want to say briefly, I don't know if Mr. Sheen has like sat through our entire meeting and has more, and he's worked to present more than we're going to give him time for. So I would want to.
I apologize. That was not in any way intended to.
It's Dr. Morrison and I and it's a quick road show.
Okay, and I didn't, I didn't, I actually didn't realize that that was sort of why you were here. So I apologize if that came across in any way as undermining you.
I think we can talk for less than 10 minutes. It's, the variable is what questions you might have. So it's a way of sharing responsibility, right?
Okay, that's a perfect answer.
But our part won't be long.
So I'm going to speak for just a minute or two on context and then, you know, really the point of sharing the update is, you know, what's happened and more, what's the process moving forward? To inform the committee and the public. So in late June, early July, there was a group of 12 members of the enrollment working group. So it was nine educators in Amherst and Pelham, so I want to include them, as well as three parent guardians who contributed to the report. And we spent 10 hours together. I'll say it was a really healthy process. We had people on both ends of perhaps the homework continuum. And I think we landed, in my opinion, I truly was the facilitator of the group. I literally talk about putting my different hats on when I jumped in and I didn't do that very often. I think we came to a place where there was broad consensus among that group of 12 that we'd come up with a very reasonable approach, consistent with research, but also consistent with local norms. And so, you know, we went through an editing process, group editing process throughout the summer to take the ideas we developed and make them kind of a document, a draft that was worth sharing of a homework practice document, it's not a policy in a school committee level, but practices that would be consistent across our schools. And starting tomorrow, the feedback process will start and that's where I will leave it off to, for Mr. Sheen to pick it up.
On, yes, tomorrow, the.
Would that be more comfortable or is that okay?
Do you want to have seat?
Sure.
I try to forget that there's an audience beyond the room. Tomorrow for the early release day, the faculties from Crocker Farm, Wildwood and Pelham School will be meeting. Fort River will do this at another time in a couple of weeks. And this will be their first run through this document that the homework working group produced, though people received it a few days ago if they wanted to review it ahead of time. And the members of the working group will facilitate breakout groups by grade bands, so K to 2, 3, 4 and 5, 6. In order to explain their work, show them the research that they looked through, talk about the discussions that they had and the, what they got to in the end. And we've given them a framework as far as sort of a protocol, so they can make good use of the time and collect some, some good feedback. And there'll also be an option for teachers and other staff to provide feedback after that, if they think of things later. Families and other members of the school community will receive the homework proposal this Friday and the superintendent's email update. And there will be a process for feedback in that way, too, probably a Google form or something like that. And then we've reached out to the PGOs in the elementary schools to organize some sort of face to face session for family, family members who would like to participate in that way. So we're trying to make, we're trying to make sure that we get feedback and discussion from as many stakeholders as possible. And then the working group will go back and review the feedback and produce an updated document probably around mid October and put that back out to stakeholders and not quite so formalized a process. There won't be another early release day to bring everyone together, take feedback back from that and then present a final version in December with the hope of having implementation after the new year.
Thank you. It's, it's, I'm appreciating throughout these different sort of presentations that we're having, just the extent to which there is such a concerted effort to be, to be inclusive and, and really active engagement and, and intentional. And I'm, I'm seeing that again and again, and I just really feel that that's a, a really positive direction to see our, our district going on in a lot of fronts. So this is, I think this is really exciting and really intentional and it's really about what's best for kids, which is, which is great. So comments and questions?
My comment wasn't made. We really opened the questions.
I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead.
So this is kind of a regional question, but it's not really. So I don't know if you could talk about, I mean, obviously this is an Amherst school committee meeting, but kids do go from sixth grade to seventh grade. So I don't know if, if you thought about that kind of interface and how that's being studied at the regional level and what connections there are with you.
Yeah, I can start and if you want to jump in, feel free. So yeah, the document's been shared with the middle school and high school principals and Southeast Campus principal as well. So at least they're aware of what's on paper. It, it is a regional topic. I mean, Mr. Sheen and I just got back from the challenge success workshops, so we'll, we'll be, you know, probably superintendent update, if not at a, you know, as a more agenda point. You know, we'll be talking more about what we learned there and, and there's a lot of connections, in my opinion, between the document we saw there. I actually went to a session out at that workshop on middle school homework. And their document looked very, very similar to actually the elementary draft, which was affirming and yet I wish I went to a different workshop once I'd seen that. But, but the format was the same, is talking about the purposes of homework, the expectations for homework and the responsibilities of different stakeholders. So, you know, that looks really different than what our current homework practices and policies, internal policies look like. But I think there's going to have to be lots of conversation about that transition. I think the good news is that's going to happen anyway. A whole team attended this conference, including administrators, teachers, a child, a student and a parent, who all have lots of thoughts. And it wasn't just on homework, it was a much broader conference, conversation. But one of the presenters, one of the heads of the organization was actually on the plane ride, sitting in front of me. And one of the things he noted about kind of general stress and low, experience of students is there's a whole lot of ways you can think about student wellbeing. And until you address the load issue, the other ones are not particularly statistically significant in what they find. Like there's a whole lot of things you can do, but if you're never addressing the load of what students are, how they're experiencing, not just homework, but just their experience, everything else is sort of, you know, icing, you know, but that's where the cake is. So I think there'll be ongoing conversations bridging the gap. I thought this was a nice model, actually, Amherst and Pelham, working together on something, both in terms of representation of parents as well as staff and, and as well as in the feedback sessions.
Yeah.
This is, do we currently have a homework policy around vacation?
So last year, and I plan to do the same thing again, we did not have homework over vacation weeks at the elementary level. And I do not anticipate that changing.
So I just wanted to comment, I, you know, really appreciate the amount of work that's going into this. I'm, I'm really looking forward to seeing the, so the, the report in mid October and then the final in December. And, you know, I, I'm just heartened by the fact that we have, you know, administrators and educators working together with parents and students. And I think that, you know, it, it would be great at some point to, to take, to figure out how we best take this to the broader community and how we present this information. Because I think, you know, you are gathering a lot of really important information and of course is going to result in recommendations. I would love at some point, once we get through a final report, that we consider having, you know, some sort of community wide discussion around this. You know, a sit down with the papers, you know, an in-depth exploration of this topic. Because I think that there's a lot of sort of prejudices that people hold, you know, about homework, right? And, and how important or not important it is. And there's, you know, sort of opposite ends of the spectrum and people hold both of those in, in our community. And I think, you know, it would be really helpful if you can bring them along the same way that you're bringing them along during this exploration, during the final report back. You know, just to think through what that actually looks like very carefully and thoughtfully, as, as you guys have been doing already. And I think, you know, having that conversation at a school committee level is wonderful, but it shouldn't stop here. You know, it should really go out to the broader community in a much bigger way.
Yeah, I agree. And one of the, you know, not to keep talking about this workshop, but I was just there, so it's in my head. And it was secondary focused, but one of the workshops I went to was protocols, how to have adults listen to students about their experience. Especially at the secondary level, or perhaps the elementary level as well, that's, that's often the missing ingredient to discussions on student wellbeing is hearing from the students. And it was great to have students at the workshop that way at the secondary level. At the elementary level, it's a little harder because of the age of, of students. But one of the reasons we're trying to partner with the PGO, as Mr. Sheen said, is really to, not only to get feedback on the draft plan, which is certainly the primary point, but also from a process perspective, to engage people in dialogue throughout. So, you know, those feedback sessions aren't just like, here's the papers, tell us what you think. It's much more about, here's the research base, here's what we heard, here's how the group came to their decisions. Because I think what I was most pleased about the group of 12 or 13, including me, is I think those same, you described that people have different perceptions of homework. That was true of that group as well, you know, and kind of through lots of dialogue and discussion, the group came to conclusions. But, you know, not everyone's going to spend the 10 hours that that group did. So how do we sort of at least in a small way simulate that experience for the larger community? I think it's, it's a point well taken.
Thank you.
I think that, just as I'm thinking about this, that it's important to not, and I'm not saying anyone's doing this, but I mean, not to downplay or, or not anticipate what a big deal this is. It's for, for, I mean, as Ms. Ardonia said, every person has an opinion about homework, about, you know, how much, how little, what my experience was, you know, what I'd like my kid to be doing after school instead of playing video games. I mean, you know, there are a lot, there's a lot there that is about their people's personal experience and not about research. Also, you know, there are a lot of teachers who have been using homework in a certain way for, for many, many years. And they, they have, you know, established programs that are really maybe dependent on, on how, you know, that's going to require a lot of, of recalibrating and reconsidering it. And I, I just want to sort of recognize that this is a, this is a big, it's, it's a big step. And I, and I appreciate the process that has been taken to, you know, really bring this as a, as a, with, as something that's based really in research and, and, and working to bring people along. I, I think it's going to be, you know, it's, it's going to be a, a pro, it's going to be a process to bring people along. And processes are, you know, they're just, they're messy. It's nice on paper, but, you know, and I, I appreciate the work that you're doing to make that, you know, as smooth as, as, as possible and inclusive as possible. Yeah.
First off, by the way, it sounds wonderful and I'm looking forward to learning more. And I think it sounds really, I appreciate the work and the collaborative approach you've described and really liked what we heard before in the conversation before. But I can't agree enough with what Ms. Ardonia and Ms. Hazard just said, is that when you, when the time to think, I mean, I'm not saying you haven't thought about this, but the, the time to think about previewing, planning and discussing more broadly. How this has gone, how it's been developed and where it's going is, is like now or really soon. And well before you have final documents. Not because, and I'm, to be clear about this, I'm not saying that you've already had lots of public engagement, you're going to have lots of public engagement with parents and stuff. So I'm not saying you don't already have a process to edit and learn the draft. I'm really embracing what was just said about this, the broader onion layers of community that we have here that if you're not careful, just won't be paying close enough attention. And then all of a sudden, we'll see a big newspaper article in the bulletin in December saying there's this massive shift that's going to go on. And they're going to be like, oh my God, what's going on? How's this happening? And, and since the process you're describing is, is not only research based, which is great, but also literally you're engaging the different expert communities of interest, from parents to, I guess, potentially students to educators. And you're doing that on a stepped basis that really is clearly taking that input in a way that's really rich. It would be a shame to accidentally create an impression down the road that there's this thing that just suddenly happened. And I think that could be, I think that could be managed on the front end by just being really, again, probably going to the media and talking more broadly about this at points that may not feel totally ready or comfortable to do. And being comfortable with that uncertainty around what you have to say, where you are and where you're going to be.
Helpful feedback, thank you.
Okay, one, is that, are we kind of getting close to the, okay, yeah.
Yes, I'll keep it very brief. So everything Mr. Takajima just said, because I was sort of imagining like what you said really struck a chord with me in terms of, you know, the, the load on student, it has such a major impact on student wellbeing and that's what this is all about, right? It's being proactive. It's not that like our homework policies are hellacious. It's, it's about being proactive, seeing an opportunity to be progressive and proactive about improving student wellbeing. And that's, that's exciting, especially in the process that you've described. I think that could be a really engaging story, you know, to the media, whatever. It doesn't have to be, I think people are less interested in here's the, here are the nine technical conclusions about our homework policy. Your policy DF9J, whatever, than it is about, let's talk about student wellbeing and helping be proactive about it. And we had, we had this great recent example of the food services, right? Which was another great example, proactive, improving student wellbeing. So yes, plus one of Mr. Takajima.
Yeah. And, and so maybe if I can conclude by sharing, this is really helpful. And I think, you know, one of the reasons we reached out to the PGOs before, I mean, it's going to be, you know, we'll put in the newsletter on Friday, is that we want to make sure, and I'm not sure going to get there because, you know, it's hard to schedule all these things. But we, you know, we did say there's going to be meetings next month where, for in-person feedback. And, and we wanted to let people know that electronic feedback wasn't the only mechanism to both learn more and offer more feedback. Because I think that can feel really, it does feel really limiting, I shouldn't say can, it does feel really limiting to people that they won't have kind of face to face interactions with this. And, and so I'll do some thinking with, with Mr. Sheen about just, you know, inviting the press into some of the, you know, like what would be the mechanism to invite the press? It's a natural thing, that's not just an article, but actually hears from lots of different folks. And I, we are fully expecting, receive lots and lots of feedback in all sorts of directions. And, you know, the challenge would be what to do with it, but that's another reason we built in multiple rounds of feedback. So that it's not like you only get it once and then that's the only chance. And then we come up with the next final. And I think it's just worthy to do the kind of multiple iterations so that we can make the reasonable adjustments that, you know, we believe in while still maintaining some level of fidelity to a working group that was highly representative of the community in many ways. And I think did exemplary work. So that's our challenge.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for joining us.
For staying with us.
Take stamina. Okay, great. So our final item is, and we did, we have, we had no gifts. It's not on there, okay. Is school committee planning. So I have what I said at the beginning about a discussion around having a column in the Gazette and authorship, et cetera. I also have, let's see, we will need to, did we decide we were going to look at language for the PVC SCS? Or no, not yet, I'm sorry.
I think that we said that I would bring the updated language to not the next meeting, but the 10th.
The 17th.
The 17th, sorry, yes.
Great. So we will be looking at language around a mission statement. And we were looking at a composition list and we will be voting on a composition list, yes?
I agree with all that. I think we, I think we said we were leaving open the possibility to edit in the warrant.
Yes.
Yes, that's what it was. Okay, editing warrant possibility, thank you. And I'm, I think I'm going to leave open the possibility of a discussion around how we're going to, I mean, I mean, we need to talk about recruitment and we might need, you know, selection. It'd be great to get on that, yeah.
All right, just on the warrant. So we, we voted the draft and I presume this is okay and actually probably encouraged for us to share with the community directly. So we can, if there's any feedback between now and the 25th, when we have the last opportunity. to kind of tweak the language, that that would be something advisable?
Yes, so what's our mode for doing that? I mean, it's going to be attached, it's an attached document to this meeting, but how, do you have a thought of that?
I was just talking about you sending the document out, I think you already did, actually, the Word doc to the school committee, just so we have it available, because there are individual members who provide us a lot of...
I didn't send it out.
Oh, okay.
No, because nobody sent it out.
I'm confusing with another document.
Yeah, there are other documents.
Somebody document.
You sent out five of them today.
So, yeah, if you, if you want to send that out, just, and I don't think it needs a big, you know, to-do, but just, there's been a lot of individuals who have contributed very productively, I think, in conversations that would be interested in just having, as, given that they, if they weren't seeing this meeting.
Right, right, I think, I think that's, so basically, it's sort of, it's fine for us, encouraged for us to go forward and share this draft of the document that we voted on.
But just, yeah, just to be clear, I mean, it's not an open call for edits, right? Because, okay.
Right, right. I just want to make sure that if I shared it with...
Just being very clear.
Some community members and some meeting members who have provided valuable feedback, that that was all right.
I feel comfortable with that, everyone, okay, okay. Dr. Morris, did you have other?
Not for Monday, no.
Not for Monday, okay, okay, good.
One additional item, it doesn't have to be next meeting, you can work out the agenda, and maybe more appropriate for interim, sorry, for a superintendent's update. We had talked in the late spring about reaching out to the principals and reaching out to staff about what near-term improvements could be made at Fort River, Wildwood, getting their feedback, and rolling it up that you would then present to the school committee that we could consider in time for budget. Again, not as a replacement to the building projects, but knowing that the buildings are imminent, what, what are, maybe some things for student and teacher and educator well-being, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, can I respond to that briefly? And I'm happy to do that. I plan to bring that up as part of the budget process, you know, as you know, we've posted for a facilities director, and kind of my preference is that having a facilities director vet that list, and someone with more knowledge base than myself, and be able to speak to it, would be my preference, it just positions me awkwardly to describe things that I am not an expert in, so that position's posted and looking to be filled by November 1st, which is before the budget process kind of more formally kicks off here. So that was my key plan on it. That's amenable to committee, if you'd like a different process, I'm happy to adjust.
And last week, we did the budget, budget guidance, I mean, we're sort of, we were at a certain place with it at the region, which maybe made it less, us less ready to do it at the Amherst level, is that sort of where we were, so...
I was totally about to ask about that.
Are we, are we at a place where we don't need to do it at this next meeting?
Well, there's a follow-up meeting with myself and Mr. Mangano and the committee members who are assigned at the regional level tomorrow, so I think I may know a little more after tomorrow.
Okay, so we could...
Yeah, so we could, we have to post by Thursday for a meeting on Monday. So, yeah, I mean, I think, I'll just put a note to myself after that meeting to reach out to you, if that's okay, because we may get to a place of resolution and then have something more to share, but given the feedback that Mr. Mangano and I received at region, I wouldn't want to bring the same, it'd feel awkward to bring the same document to Amherst, given that there was substantive feedback. So if you could hold the day?
Sure, sure.